Members of the board, I hope everybody, morning, I hope everybody had a nice holiday weekend. It's nine thirty AM and today's Tuesday, July seventh. My name is Brian Zellwalt, I'm the director of the county's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role today of technology moderator for the virtual meeting. On the panel with me is Don Crowe from the county attorney's office, he'll be serving as process moderator. Before we start the meeting, let's do a quick roll call, make sure we've got communications and then we'll turn it over to the board chair. Let's start with Commissioner Eggers.
Good morning, I'm here, Brian.
Good morning, Commissioner Eggers, thank you. Commissioner Seal.
Good morning.
Good morning, good to see you. Commissioner Welch.
Morning, Brian.
Good morning. Commissioner Long. Commissioner Long, you got on mute.
Good morning, I'm here.
All right, good to see you. Commissioner Justice.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Commissioner. Commissioner Peters.
I'm here, Brian.
Thank you, ma'am. And Commissioner Girard.
Good morning, Brian.
All right, I'll hand it over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. First item on the agenda is local state of emergency, Mr. Burton.
Morning Commissioners, as you know, we're still in the middle of this pandemic and we're requesting this morning that we extend the local state of emergency from July the tenth to July the seventeenth. By extending the state of emergency, this allows us to access federal funds. It gives us all the authorities under an emergency to be able to act accordingly. And so we request that we continue to extend that. For background, I would ask for Dr. Cho to give us, like he did on the call, the policy call this morning, kind of a summary of where we're at and then we'll talk a little bit, you know, about some of the questions that have been raised.
Good morning Commissioners. In terms of a situational awareness, some of the numbers we're seeing today, we will report over nine thousand cases today with two hundred and six deaths here in Pinellas County. Hundred and fifty-four of those deaths occurring in the long-term care facilities. Over the last two weeks, we have seen an increase on our death count, our weekly death counts with reporting preliminarily last week at forty-three. Sometimes we do get some reported after the fact, so we may see that number increase even further. Now, in terms of our seven-day rolling case counts, we're averaging about three hundred and sixty-four per day. And our seven-day rolling percent positivity has been at thirteen percent. Now, what we're seeing in terms of our healthcare system is an increased volume there as well, increased volume within the emergency rooms, the hospitals, as well as the ICUs. And as of this morning, the ICUs did report that there are a hundred and eleven COVID patients in the ICU beds, the most we've had to date. We do continue to see a community widespread here in Pinellas County affecting all ages, mainly occurring in congregate settings, indoor settings, so we're seeing, again, continue to see those cases within long-term care facilities, but we're also seeing them in summer camps, daycares, and restaurants, and country clubs, in gyms, any place where people are congregating, mainly indoors. So I think more than anything, I think it underscores our continued message to maintain that social distancing and the importance of masks. We certainly don't want to see the healthcare system strained any further. Because again, that was, as you recalled, the main reason we flattened the curve and did these policies to begin with. So with that, I'll stop there.
Well, and I think Commissioners, as you've heard, the real issue when we started this off back, you know, a long time ago is, was to flatten the curve and allow our healthcare system to catch up. They're currently being strained. They have plans in place, they have surge plans, be able to handle increased capacity. A lot of that has to do with staffing and they're currently in the process of requesting resources, be able to staff up. You've seen a couple of hospitals that have taken the step of curtailing some elective surgeries. That frees up not only beds, but it frees up staff to be able to support other types of their operations such as emergency room and others. So the hospitals have been very proactive in working with us and taking the steps necessary to be able to address any ER needs and address the capacity issues. But you're also very aware that, you know, with the spike that we've seen, they're being, they're being strained. And those resources are being stretched. But they do have plans in place, they're looking at those, they haven't necessarily enacted those yet. But we continue to work with them and talk with them to where we can make decisions as we go along. The big, the big question we've all heard is, you know, you know, what are you gonna do? That's a, you know, very difficult question because as we know, there was no question that a population that is frequencing, especially younger kids at our bars, the governor took actions to close them. And so that is a step that has been taken. You took the step requiring masks indoors. That is currently in place and absent some pushback on that, we, you know, we do see that as a help. But the other steps are difficult. We saw one, one county, Miami-Dade County, that took the steps of closing restaurants and just doing takeout and things like that. That's a pretty extraordinary step. And I'm sure, you know, there's going to be a lot of questions of what steps to take, but, you know, targeting just restaurants or this, it's really all of the indoor areas, just as Dr. Cho said, and so those are very difficult steps. Now, we're also seeing though there are positivity rate compared to Miami-Dade County is far lower, you know, they're a twenty percent plus. And, and so although thirteen percent isn't good, we would certainly want it to be lower. We're not, you know, there. We do coordinate with our peer counties, you know, we coordinated with them when we had questions about whether we should close our beach or not. They didn't, we didn't, and it allowed people to spread out, right or wrong, you know, that was, that was the thought is that it decompresses, you know, for where people congregate. So these next steps, we're going to continue to monitor, we're going to continue to look, we have increased our testing capability. And, you know, if somebody needs a test, you can get a test. That has been strained in the past, you're seeing several of our sites that have been increased, these are all through community partners. And later today, we'll be announcing another site that'll be open. And that will give us a much more increased capacity to where people can get a test in a timely manner. Results vary, you know, depending upon the labs that they're using. But we've significantly increased, increased our, our testing capabilities. The main thing is that we're not out of this, we continue to hit the message that you need to be safe, you need to separate from, from folks and not congregate in large groups. That's a difficult message because it's nice, people are out about and, you know, kind of let their guard down a little bit. And so that's where we're at. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good news Barry on the testing, and I see we're still adhering to not announcing it fully until everyone does, but I, I think it is fair to say that that will include some after-hours and weekend testing that the community has been asking for. So I want to thank you for making sure that was in there. One question we also get, just in terms of the data transparency, is on the ICU beds, particularly on our dashboard. For example, right now it's showing fifty-four beds, but that's really not a true measure because you, as y'all said, you have surge capacity and they can actually increase that number fairly quickly. Is there any way we can show some indication that what that surge capacity is or just indicate there is additional surge capacity? Because what we all get in emails is, you know, saying, or Pinellas County is down to ten beds. And we in fact do have some surge capacity. So I would just ask if that's something y'all can look at, some indication that that is not the bottom-line number for Pinellas County, I think that would be helpful in terms of transparency.
Well, we can certainly address that from, you know, from a messaging standpoint on our website, maybe Dr. Cho or Dr. Jameson would at least try to give the public some assurance in terms of what that means and, you know, what hospital options hospitals have when we're, when we're talking about something like that.
And I guess the other question I had is, you know, do we have a number for what those surge beds are for Pinellas County? All hospitals to put together is at a hundred, two hundred, what is that number? I think that would help, you know, us understand exactly where we are.
Okay. So let me, I can start it off. In terms of the hospital plans, they do have various surge plans. And certainly we can ask for a specific number, I don't think I have that offhand. They do have the capacity, a lot of them to enhance their step-down beds, to convert them into more a ICU setting. And as we sort of discussed prior, one of the limitations and the rate-limiting step with that has been the staffing aspect of it, and I think we're addressing it by various means, and I know the hospital systems themselves have looked at other options. So there is an opportunity to expand the beds and we'll continue to work with the hospitals and try to get that data to you in terms of the specifics. However, I also do want to highlight though, the COVID numbers themselves within the ICU beds have increased dramatically over the last few weeks and something I think we need to also keep an eye.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers, did I see your hand? Commissioner Eggers.
You have to unmute Commissioner Eggers.
At least once per meeting, if not more, sorry about that again. Yeah, Commissioner Welch was touching on a few things about, you know, the number of beds that we have available. I know we've often talked about it, not necessarily being the beds, but the staff needed to take care of those beds. And we've been talking about since we started this, we've had this parallel effort going on with regards to a super sniff either facility or additional, additional beds outside the hospitals per se. And I know again, it's perhaps staffing and maybe that's something that we need to take a page from the hospitals that got addition or getting additional staffing. But with the advent of the schools opening up here in about thirty days and in the conversation this morning in our meeting, talking about the inevitability of those numbers going up, I mean, you have staff, you have kids, all going to be together. You know, over a hundred thousand in total between the two. I think that's something that we really need to be pursuing more dogmatically so that when we are ready, we can push a button and almost get it started. And if it means trying to get additional nursing lined up to staff that, then I think we need to be looking at that sooner rather than later. The other thing that strikes me in the conversation today about the schools were the continued request for rapid turnaround testing. We've been talking about that since the beginning. And I know it's been limited to certain first responders and perhaps medical. I think we're going to need to have some of that available for our school system and some of those key operators to keep the system going. Again, if, if, if we get, you know, somebody infected, how fast is that going to spread within that group? And then, then could it, you know, I think the example this morning was brought up was the school buses. Again, so we've heard a lot about rapid testing and our ability to do it, I heard something this morning, it's more about turnaround results, turnaround, you know, it's the labs that we have. So yeah, I'd like to understand a little bit more about that and how difficult it is to set up your own lab that to take care of some of those testings. You know, I don't mean us in government, but some medical arm that we have more direct control over. But those to me are things that were jumping out, they've been jumping out for three months and even more so now as the numbers have raised, so maybe some, you know, so you can talk a little bit about that super sniff and then availability in the testing right now. And then I had a couple of other questions that I'll weigh in over after others ask. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll address the super sniff, but certainly Dr. Cho can weigh in on that also, he's on those calls. And, but then I'll ask him to address the testing. That is not a, a local, that is a national issue and, you know, continues to challenge everybody. In terms of the nursing homes, we do have a long-term care facility group, they're meeting, Dr. Cho's part of that. We've looked at different options and we continue to look at different options, but the facilities also have to agree to use them. You know, and if they, in other words, if they keep their patients then, or their residents in their facilities and they don't want to use a facility and they're able to maintain them, then, then, you know, then that facility is not needed. And so we have talked to different options, we've talked to Hillsboro County, right now we haven't pulled the trigger on that, but we continue to look at options and prepare for that. If in fact they see that need and, and the, the group of long-term care facilities come together and they want to do that, we certainly can pull the trigger in that fairly quickly. I'll let Dr. Cho address the testing and anything he wants to add on the super sniff.
So yes, I think you covered the main points on that, Barry, the continuing to look for opportunities, to look for those alternative sort of sites for the, for that super sniff concept, we were fortunate to have one of our long-term care facilities double the beds, so we do have some capabilities here. And again, we'll continue to look for those opportunities to offload some of those hospital beds. The hospital beds from, from the hospitals, free up those beds. Regarding the testing aspect of it, I think we've made some strides regarding in testing overall. And Barry alluded to additional sites in our, for our community testing sites, so I think we're meeting somewhat of the demand. The challenge continues to be, as Commissioner mentioned, the rapid turnaround. I think that's based on limitations of, from a supply chain aspect of it, some of the more rapid tests are limited in terms of the actual kits within laboratories, but as I mentioned, we'll continue to work with the schools on that. I'm on one of the medical work groups for that and explore things like vendor labs that does have a faster turnaround times.
And just finally, Commissioner, I do want you to understand, we do have the ability to pull the trigger and start a sixty-bed sniff rapidly. If that's a decision and there's that need. So understand that we are prepared, we haven't done that yet because they're managing the population as they have right now, but we do have that capability.
All right, thanks Barry. The question on that is, are those, are those general hospital beds or are those ICU beds?
No, in a setting like that, it would probably have to be the hospital bed. So even though that might free up the hospital beds and maybe the associated staffing with it, so which could be an advantage to the hospitals, it doesn't address the underlying need for the ICU sort of capabilities. That does really have to remain in the hospital setting.
Yeah, well, I mean, clearly that, that's the problem area that I, that I'm hearing, is that it's the ICU beds more so than the the general beds unless that by offloading some of those to another site, it turns up more ICU beds on, on campus, so to speak, on the hospital campus, on the hospital campuses. And so it's good to know that we're ready to do that and we're ready to pull the trigger, but I still not hearing enough about the additional ICU beds. And so hopefully we have a sense of that ourselves and how those hospital plans, because, I mean, hospital plans, we're trying to get as much of that information as possible, and I just want to make sure that we're, that you guys are, you all are comfortable that we're getting the information that we need. Just two things real quick on, on having our own lab to do the testing on it, number, that was one question. The other one, Dr. Cho, you mentioned congregate settings in general are a potential problem. But you mentioned daycares and gyms and all of that. Are you just saying because they're congregations of places that they are likely to have problems because of the lack of contact tracing that we're doing? There's no way to, I mean, we ended, we kind of figured that bars and, and nightclubs were a problem. The number of cases for young people was going way up, so we kind of use that kind of logic to say perhaps we're getting it from there. But are you saying that we have, we're, we're doing contact tracing, that we know that gyms are a problem, that we know that daycare is a problem? Or are you generalizing?
No, no, I'm reporting, those things, we've seen multiple cases in various settings, that's indoors and congregate, I think it's really any of the risk factors. If you think about it, with any respiratory virus, you need that close and prolonged contact. So any setting that, that sets that up is potentially at risk, if you think about it, especially if there is community widespread. You can base it on some of the ages distributions that we're seeing, I think still the, the biggest age groups in terms of the number of cases are the twenty-five to twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, followed by the fifteen to twenty-four-year-olds. So I can see where the county made that decision regarding the bars or the state at this, at the state level. But, but to be honest, we are seeing increases across every age group and again, in indoors is a higher risk than outdoors, and anytime there's a congregate setting and a respiratory virus, that is a risk. You did mention on contact tracing, as I think I mentioned previously, we were, we have been able to ramp up staff. We have currently thirty-nine investigators, full and part-time, seventeen contact monitors. The state has partnered and contracted with private vendors, I think two or three. We've recently, just in the past week and a half, received thirty additional staff to assist both with the contact tracing and the testing aspect of it. With more to come in the near future. But as, as I think I've mentioned on this call, as we mentioned on our EPG calls, as the numbers grow, it does get to be a challenge, just because that each case does generate five to seven close contacts. So you can imagine sort of how it's sort of growing in terms of contact tracing exponentially. The other issue I sort of want to mention is that we're also seeing some pushback in terms of people willing to give that kind of information. I think that's vital to have the correct and precise information to assist us with our contact tracing efforts.
Yeah, and again, I asked it twice and you haven't answered the one question, so maybe it's like, you poor, poor Commissioner doesn't know what he's talking about. So it was regarding the ability to set up our own lab to do the test results of the testing that's being done so we can control our own destiny a little bit more. Is that just something that is, you know, has, you have to be state-certified and it's impossible to get, so it's only certain labs that can do that?
I know we've explored this, I think one of the limitations, I think it requires that it has to be married with a CLIA-certified lab, and I'm not sure if that exists within our county, at least county government. We have talked to hospitals in terms of partnering, looking at other mail-in vendors for those of the rapid test, but we can certainly explore that further.
Yeah, it would just seem that that's an area that we really could really ramp up, is that ability to have turnaround testing and whatever it takes to do that. In many cases would be very helpful, from our first responders to our nurses and doctors and and clearly some of the other needs that we're talking about within the school system. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Jameson, I think, I know you explored that.
Well, I was just gonna say that we have actively looked at whether or not we could set up our own lab. And at this point concluded that we do not have that capability and we'd be better served to partner with somebody who already has a lab and work to expand their capabilities. And so that is where we're working right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great news. Appreciate it.
Anybody else have questions? Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Eggers kind of went down the path a little bit as we're seeing the spike in the younger populations and the contact tracing. And typically, that is in smaller areas and you're looking for geographic kind of thing, but here we're trying to track the behavior, I guess. So you kind of touched on it with Commissioner Egger, so let me ask you about the steps that we are taking. And it's been just under two weeks since we implemented the mask ordinance. And so what, what kind of timeframe would you expect if, if mask-wearing was really successful as far as high, high compliance and that kind of thing? What would be the time period that you would expect us to see a stabilization or even a reduction of numbers if the mask is successful?
Well, I think what we mentioned in the past, for any policies like that, we probably see it at a minimum two weeks because with the incubation period, but more likely three to four weeks. And keeping in mind that it's probably, if any benefit from the mask, it'd probably be in conjunction with that and the bar closure. So the mask in itself doesn't, is going to have an impact, but it has to be married with other social distancing, either policies or procedures.
And then I know we've hit these kind of high numbers, but the concern is that in six, seven weeks, as the sheriff mentioned, the schools open. And I guess I'm just, as we try to make decisions, each step that we make, something else happens in our community or society that impacts how those numbers really look. And we're just trying to get to where there's a logic to, we made decision A and ended up in result B and that kind of thing. So that we're not just trying to keep up with what other counties are doing just for the sake of doing that, but that we're making decisions that have a real impact right here. And so just trying to make sense of these numbers and the younger population getting it. Are we still seeing the, the severity levels based on age and health-related conditions? Or are you seeing any other trends in that, in that issue?
Um, as, with this virus, the more vulnerable people for severe complications and death are obviously those older than sixty-five, those with chronic health conditions. Just the fact that our median age is higher than other parts of the state, I think that's put Nels County a little bit at risk. And we have seen that, for example, with some of the deaths that we're seeing over the last two weeks. And then as you also have seen, our hospital trends have increased both in the hospital beds and the ICUs. And the ICU would be a sort of indicator of a more of a severe disease. We have, we have not had through this pandemic over a hundred until this past weekend, week in our ICU bed. So that, that to me is an indicator that, that there is severity. And even if, even if you argue that this disease in itself is mild, if you have bigger case counts or bigger cases, will ultimately result in hospitalization and severe forms of the disease just statistically. I hope.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. The last question within, something we've talked about since I think March or April, and you mentioned last week, was that ACHA was working on a additional code of conduct or some kind of thing that our, our employees at long-term care facilities would be asked to kind of internalize and take that extra step of responsibility. Has anything happened formally on that?
I think the decision was more in terms of a code of conduct, I did have that conversation, more and more the messaging piece of it, I think it's important. Because it goes beyond even the long-term care facilities, it's really anywhere that goes back to that group setting that I mentioned before. Just making sure and people are aware of those risks. So we'll continue to push that message, but nothing, nothing formal.
Okay.
Commissioner Seal, did I see your hand up?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So Dr. Cho, when, when you're doing the contact tracing and people are calling in and if it's concentrated in one particular business or restaurant, are you urging them to close? Or what's the message that you're giving about that?
So again, it's a case by case, we are seeing multiple, multiple cases, I think we're going to work with the, with the facilities. I think we're fortunate, I think a lot of them have closed on their own. But it's something, if there is a tremendous amount, something we would recommend, if there's a number of cases just linked specifically to a particular business.
Okay. And then, you know, listening to all the previous questions and so on, I guess I still, since we don't have our arms around the hospital's surge capacity, we really do need to have an answer about that. So I'd like to see that plan, and I think we all would, because that's a major concern to everyone. The other thing I just wanted to note, looking at figures over the over the last eighteen days, going from June the nineteenth to today's reporting, we've seen a three-fold number of cases from just over three thousand to now over nine thousand. Our positive rate was six point seven percent and now it's thirteen percent. So I am very concerned about that. Um, and so just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Well, so how much? How much authority do we have to make the hospitals tell us what their surge capacity is? Cause that's not something I've been hearing. I mean, we've been talking to them, cajoling them. Their private businesses.
I'll let Dr. Cho, um, do that, but you know, I, I know that they, they have internal plans and that has to do with staffing. So some, you know, put that out more than others, but they have been working in partnership with us. Um, so I don't want to imply that they're, they're not providing that information. Um, but they don't necessarily send us a, you know, copy of that plan, but I'll let Dr. Cho address that. Lourdes is also on the line and she could also, uh, discuss that she's part of those discussions.
Yeah. So we do have at least a week or bi-weekly, uh, calls with the hospitals, uh, with our work group. They've been amazing partners. So I do want to mention that, uh, echo Barry's point. Uh, no, I think it's a matter of asking. Uh, I think the, the issue has always been, um, it's probably more fluid in terms of the number of beds because it is basically and based and directly related, uh, to the staffing, uh, capacities within the facility. So they could have more beds if they had more staffing, for example. So having that set number may be difficult and maybe, uh, uh, pretty dependent on, on the staffing levels. But I, I will take this, uh, question back to the, the group and ask them for whatever specific numbers they can give uh, to us and, uh, I will share it with the commissioners.
Anything you want to add to that, Lourdes?
Yeah, I just want to say we did, um, as we previously mentioned, um, survey the hospitals. Um, that was due to us. So we can turn that around and provide that to the board as far as their surge capacity. And I, I just want to echo what Barry said. They have been great partners. We have several calls a week. Um, and they have just done a great job.
Our, our C, our hospital CEOs, they're, I mean, when we talk about testing, um, the reason we were able to do testing is because of the partnership with them. They've offered labs up, they've offered swabs up. They've done anything to support each other and our other community testing partners or community health centers. Um, our, our hospital CEOs have really been true community partners. This is a number that will get to you, to where you have that assurance. Um, but you know, let, let's put it in that in context because I think for the public, they're asking, what is the search capacity? Is that a field hospital? Well, no, they'll, you, you see plenty of beds, but they'll take a wing of a hospital and simply convert that to an ICU. Um, and so it's, it's operating within the, you know, the constraints of their resources and shifting the type of focus that they have and the way they're doing that. Everybody will probably do that a little differently based on their setup, their staffing, their protocols, um, and their, their corporate policies. Um, but that's really in a simplified, you know, form, that's, that's what we're talking about. Uh, they do have those and, and again, we'll, we'll get you those numbers because I know the public is asking you, you know, I mean, we're, we're down to fifty-four beds in a county. Come on. And, and I, and I understand that and, and I, and I'm, I'm, I'm just as concerned as you. I do have faith because I, I've watched them, you know, operate and, and respond to that challenge um, and the needs of our community. They, that's which is completely where they're focused around. Um, but we will get that to you to provide that type of, of assurance.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Welch?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, um, based on the reporting that we hear every, uh, eight o'clock call, you know, the hospitals have been a great partner. So certainly didn't want to imply that. But we also ask folks to look at our website and they're doing that. And they see that number and it's a scary number. So just in terms of transparency and, and knowing what existing or additional capacities out there, I think is important. Uh, and since Lourdes is here, and I just want to thank Lourdes for the great job she's done. Um, we're, we're learning as we go along and Commissioner Eggers talked about super sniffs. And I had to go look that up when you talked about it. Can you explain for folks that are watching what the super sniff concept is?
Sure. So currently we have one. It started off with thirty beds and they just increased it with the help of ACHA. We had to reach out to them, um, and the help of Bay Care Hospital to another thirty beds. So they now have sixty beds. And it's basically a place that is, um, for COVID patients to decompress the hospitals. Right? Someone is, does not have the level of care that's needed in a hospital and they're safe to step down before they can go back to their regular nursing home. Um, so right now we have sixty and we continue to look for more.
Thank you, Lourdes. Thank you, Madam.
Yeah. How many people we have in those right now, Lourdes?
In the actual super sniff or?
Yeah.
Um, I would say as of today, it's probably close to capacity would be my guess from our last call.
At the thirty or sixty?
It's a constant churning.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But what number is that, Madam Chair? Is that the thirty or the sixty?
Uh, the sixty.
Ooh, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, just, um, you know, when we, we, when we make policy decisions, a lot of the, you know, based on numbers that were given, um, some of it, but very seriously, a big part of it's based on the hospital situation that we have, um, number of ventilators, ICU beds, et cetera. Uh, there's another piece that I know the doctors spend time and they get information from all over the world and all over the state. Um, I, we get a lot of, um, folks that send technology or new science, uh, evolving sciences on this issue. How are you all processing that? What organizations do you process it through? To bring it to the table for our discussions in the morning as, as the, uh, as our emergency policy group or to the commission? How do you guys process that? Cause there's a lot of noise. Um, there's also a lot of, 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 you know, information that's working its way. The latent defect almost, the, the after effect of this disease is something I want to keep hearing more and more about and understanding it. But there's other things that are evolving. How do you all absorb that? And how do you bring it? When do you decide to bring it to us as a policy decision? Thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll take that one, uh, if that's all right. Uh, so, um, you know, we have a, a, a concept in medicine called evidence-based medicine where, uh, if we have, just because it's the way we always did something, that's okay. But it's not nearly as good as if we have actual data to support what we're doing. Uh, and so my approach is to, um, continuously be scanning, uh, all of the peer-reviewed journals for, uh, information regarding this. Um, anything in the mainstream media, uh, is going to be taken with a grain of salt, uh, at least until I see the primary evidence behind it, uh, in a peer-reviewed journal. I also consult with experts from around the country and the world, as you mentioned. Uh, in fact, my next call is with, uh, my counterparts from the fifty largest cities in the country as well as internationally, uh, where we talk about all of these issues. Uh, and finally I'm marrying that with what I'm seeing, uh, boots in the ground, taking care of patients in the, inside the hospital uh, and trying to bring you as, as complete and as, um, uh, well-vetted, uh, a, a recommendation as I can. Uh, but there is a lot of noise out there, uh, and because this is such a new virus, uh, in the absence of data, people will share opinions that may or may not be backed up by the facts. And so that is clearly one of the most, uh, pressing challenges with responding to this virus is figuring out what is fact and what is opinion, uh, and what we should act upon and what we should wait to get more information about.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I think it's, and I think about, I was thinking early on that, you know, because like our flus that we get, they, they heighten in that January, February, maybe December, January, February timeframe. And, and then in the summertime, they kind of, I, this is really scientific here. They just kind of die out. Um, and then, and then they come back again in the, and we get our flu shots and we take care of it. And my hope had been that, that this would, you know, kind of travel some similar ground. That it, as the heat came in the summer, uh, ultraviolet and the humidity and all that came, that this would kind of die down.
So that was one theory that, that leading epidemiologists were looking for to see if that would happen. Uh, and I think, uh, most of them have concluded that we're not going to see that right now. We're going to see more of a continuous uh, burn with some peaks and valleys as opposed to more discreet huge waves with a die-off. Uh, in some ways that's probably a very good thing because historically over the last hundred years, every pandemic that's had that, that die-off over the summer has come back with a vengeance for the second wave in the fall. So a lot of people are actually relieved that we're not seeing it completely disappear this summer because that would make them very concerned for what would happen a few months from now.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jameson. Appreciate those comments.
Very interesting. That's the first time I heard that. Okay.
The only thing I, I would add, not necessarily on that, is it's more on the information aspect. I just, um, I know there's a lot, especially on the social media aspect. It's, it's, it's important uh, to really get, uh, the information from reputable sort of sources, sort of like the CDC. Keeping in mind that, uh, when they make these recommendations, when they review the literature out there, they have an expert panel sort of reviewing and, and, and sort of combing through some of the information out there. So, uh, the CDC, the NIH, uh, these organizations do review the literature out there as, as, as we do independently and using more of the peer-reviewed journals. So it's important to make sure your, your, uh, information that you're getting out there is appropriately vetted and reviewed by those experts.
Yeah. And I cannot emphasize enough that there is incomplete information. We don't know everything about this and we are making the best recommendations that we can based upon what's available uh, to help you make the best decisions that you can based upon the available information. But in, you know, in hindsight, there will likely be things we should have done differently. Uh, we just, we don't know that right now.
Well, and I think one of the things we're seeing is that we get sent all this information that was published months ago and has since, you know, the experts have changed their minds or they've found out more about this disease. Uh, you know, I believe that you guys are up on top of the latest because that's your, that's your job. Um, so thank you. I appreciate that. Um, anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Welch?
Commissioner Welch, you're muted.
I've been around Dave Eggers too long. So, uh, maybe if today's at the right time to talk about this, I just want to um, kind of jump on what we talked about, what y'all talked about this morning with the schools opening. The sheriff talked about the impact, which I think was, um, very insightful. Um, what is our plan for our shelters? And I don't want to jinx this. I'm knocking on my wood table. Um, if we had to evacuate right now and put folks in shelters, you know, based on the latest science, what new procedures are we going to put in place? Whether it's, you know, taking temperatures, rapid testing. Do we have that plan? Are we developing it? Where are we in terms of the shelter issue?
Um, we do have those plans. They're, they're evolving, um, as we go. Um, but we've had to completely redo the way in which we look at shelters. Um, we used to have a standard for twenty square foot per person. Uh, that's changed to sixty to be able to help people spread out. Um, if you come into the shelter, um, you are going to wear a mask. Um, you are going to have your temperature checked. Um, and then we need to deal with people that maybe can't come into a shelter because of this. So what do we do with them? So there's a number of issues that, um, Kathy Perkins and her team have looked at and are working with community partners, work, the schools have been amazing uh, partners and working with her on options because we're going to need more space. Um, and that's something that we've had to, to shift gears on. So those plans are in place. They're reviving those. Um, I think, let's see. We have Kathy coming in to give you an update on that sometime, uh, soon. Uh, she, she is going to be on the agenda here. It's not on, uh, this month, but, but we are going to have her come in to give you those revised plans. Um, give you the kind of the latest and the greatest and things that they've had to pivot. At the same time, they're down, setting up testing sites and, uh, doing all the things to run a warehouse and get PPE out and stuff. So it's been a very, very busy summer. And I'll tell you, Kathy's leading the team, but you've got a lot of people there that are just, um, amazing. And they're working extremely hard to make these plans happen. I'm very, very proud of our emergency management team.
Thank you, Barry. They're doing outstanding work. Appreciate it.
It's been, been a long haul for them already. Let's hope we don't have any weather emergencies. Anything else? Okay, we're talking about extending the state of emergency then. Um, as is with no changes, right?
That's correct. From July the tenth to July the seventeenth.
Okay. Um, do we have anybody on the line would like to speak to this issue?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item, please hit star nine if you're coming in on the telephone line or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. Uh, Madam Chair, it appears we have around ten, ten or so people that would like to speak on this issue. Do we want to do three, two minutes? What, what are you looking for as far as comp, public comment?
Um, well, let's go for two minutes.
Okay. All right. So Madam Chair, our first speaker is Mr. Dave Waddell. Uh, Mr. Waddell, welcome back. If you can give us your, just give us your spelling and your address on your name, and then you'll have two minutes to address the board. And you'll have to unmute, sir.
Honorable Chair, the Board of County Commissioners and Staff, I really don't appreciate you taking a minute on me there, Chair. Um, thank you for the opportunity to be heard here today. My name is David Waddell. I reside at forty-eight thirty-five, one hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue North. This is an email that I sent to Congressman Charlie Crist on the thirtieth. It is with sorrow that I expressed our predicament in Pinellas County. We have missed the window that would support an effective response. It appears we are worse off than when we started. It is a shame that all of the sacrifices were for naught. Now we can only shut down again, except for essential services, suspend elective surgeries, require a mask or face covering and, and suggest some form of eye protection and stay safe at home again for however long it takes. This has become one big experiment with plenty of blame, but we have no time now for that assignment. We will learn and reflect. What we can do now is piggyback a contact tracing app onto the existing emergency county alert app for this purpose. Voluntary to begin with, but mandatory should the outbreak continue to exponentially increase beyond our control means and resources. More importantly, we need mandatory reporting by employers and employees and require they participate by civic responsibility and require notification to clients and circumstances. Only the truth. Ultimately, this approach will provide real-time data and a sunset efforts meet the required standards of good government practices and the Hippocratic oath, do no harm. We have the knowledge and practice in place for a hepatitis outbreak. We have to scale up to an automated system, not manual. This is going to be very painful economically and have an unimaginable impact on our healthcare system and society as a whole. We only get one chance at this. I would be fool-hearted to think that we get a second chance. Um, I also would like to thank Sheriff Bob Gulatari.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired.
And I also want to thank, uh, Commissioner Karen Seal for reaching out to the community. You took a minute from me for God's sakes. Sheriff, keep up the good work. And self-policing, I pray to God, these people know what that means and civic responsibility, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, our next speaker is Dawn. I don't have a last name, so Dawn, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first last name, spelling and address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just checking. Uh, Dawn Bowler, B as in Boy, O-H-L-E-R. I live at six, six, seven, eight, fifty-fourth Avenue North, St. Petersburg, three, three, seven, zero, nine.
Thank you.
The Public Health Department and CDC have adopted a revised definition for COVID-19 probable case. A probable case is not based on scientific certainty. Yet we've been told scientific certainty and reasoning has been the foundation of every forced and rationalized directive. Probable cases include clinical criteria, epidemiologic evidence and vital records criteria, all with no confirmatory laboratory testing for COVID-19. Epidemiologic evidence, the close contact with confirmed or probable cases now classifies every individual linked in contact tracing as a case with no confirmatory laboratory testing performed. COVID-19 deaths have been revised to not require PCR lab results added the CDC's admittance to combining positive and antibody test results. Given the use of federal funds to continue a local state of emergency under grossly manipulated inflated numbers is fraud supported by chapter eighteen of the United States Code, Section ten forty, fraud in connection with major disaster or emergency benefits and chapter eighteen, section ten thirty-one, major fraud against the United States.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Trevor Burgess. Mr. Burgess, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, uh, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Uh, good morning, everyone. This commission needs to do something. Miami-Dade did something. You must take action today. Do not leave this meeting without actually taking some action. Please listen to what Doctors Cho and Jameson said this morning. The risk area is indoor spread. Take action to restrict indoor activity today. This is hard, but almost every- This is hard, but almost every other country and many states in the U.S. have been successful in making these hard decisions. Testing is a huge problem. One of my employees just was tested at Johnny Ruth Clark and his results took 12 days to come back. That delay makes the testing limited in its utility. You don't have enough testing and your test results are taking too long. All of this talk about surge hospital capacity is necessary, but misplaced. You have the Titanic headed for the iceberg and are talking about having good hospital capacity on shore to treat those that almost drowned. Please also take action to steer the ship away from the iceberg. Congressman Chris wrote last night that our hospitals are out of remdesivir, but that was not discussed today. Fix the testing problem. Get access to the medicines we need and take action to limit indoor social interaction. Take in, take action today. Please do not delay further.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is John Benincasa. Mr. Benincasa, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling and address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Uh, good morning, Board of Directors, John Benincasa. My address is 125 Camper Circle, Unit D in Baltimore, Florida. I would like to specifically address your, the medical experts we have with us this morning. If economic considerations were to be taken out of the equation in addition to what we are doing right now, what would you recommend we do? Would it be closing the beaches? Would it be closing the gyms? Would it be going back into another shutdown? If economic considerations were not put out in the equation, what do we need right now to get the situation out of control? Real simple.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, our next speaker is May Quinn. Ms. Quinn, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name and spelling, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, my name is May, M A E, last name Quinn, Q U I N N. My address, my new address is 6150 Gulfport Boulevard South. I live in a condo there. I just moved to your county last week. I had been living for the last two years in Alachua County. I'm a law professor. I was teaching at the University of Florida and decided to purchase a condo in Florida before moving to Washington DC for fall, where I'll be teaching this coming year. I was shocked to discover what I discovered when I moved to my new condo this week, a lack of signage, a lack of direction for residents relating to the mandated mask wearing, and really just shocking disregard for the health of others in that space. Fortunately, the board did act when I brought it to their attention to hang signage that was meaningful with some directions. But I fear that there's a belief that they are exempted from enforcing or that they shouldn't enforce because it's a condominium. The CDC's guidelines for congregate housing make clear what should be happening. There are elderly people who live there. There's an elevator where people are riding without their masks. There's a breezeway that allows for less than six feet distance between residents. No masks are being worn there. Uh, and I would urge you to take action. I I too believe a shutdown is what's appropriate. To compare what's happening in Pinellas to Alachua, I'll tell you it's night and day. I left my condo last week and came back to Alachua. Fortunately, I have another apartment here that I'm in the process of closing up that I had somewhere else to go because of concern for my safety. Uh, I need to head back out to Gulfport today to shut down my condo. I will not stay there through end of July, as was my original plan, because of fear for my safety. So I'd urge you to enforce, at the very least, the mandated mask wearing for businesses such as condominiums, apartment complexes where elderly and at-risk persons are living. And as a concrete measure, I think a step in the right direction is, you know, I'm, I'm civil rights.
Ms. Quinn, your time has expired.
If I might just take two seconds more to suggest a visit to condos that you know in in this county have, um, you know, spaces that are shared and with some kind of message, you know, a handout, a flyer. This is a space where this needs to be enforced. That would be a great first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, our next speaker is Barbara Walker. Ms. Walker, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes.
Good morning, Barbara Walker, B A R B A R A W A L K E R. Thanks for taking public input on this meeting. My takeaway about the surge of the surge capacity, I'm kind of surprised honestly that the commissioners do not have that information already. That seems like we would have been in planning for any type of surge since March, and it's already well into July and we're just now asking that question? So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a little taken aback, uh, to be honest with you about that and feel that perhaps we're not quite as organized as we should be. So if you could address that, I'd appreciate it. The other issue, I've heard y'all mention about the schools and I'm not, I'm, I'm intending to enroll my daughter in virtual school and not send her back to high school this coming fall because we do not have this under control. And we have a lot of elderly people in our family. We're already did not see them for the 4th of July, and it's going to be a long time until we see family again because we have people that are at risk. We have huge generation gaps all the way from, you know, 15 to 70. And I just think we need to take stronger measures. I agree with the gentleman that said, you need to do something today. I am, my other takeaway is that there hasn't been any real discussion here on doing something today. So I'm urging you to do that. And the last thing I'm asking from you, not just in regards to this awful pandemic, but to everything that we do, I'm asking you for solidarity. And I appreciate you tremendously. I want you to know that. You're under terrible circumstance with the national government pointing one way and the state pointing another way. And here you are, you know, having to deal with all of that, and I recognize it. Thank you all. I think you're all very wonderful. I appreciate you listening. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Glenn Rehing. Mr. Rehing or Rehing, I'm sorry, I didn't get the pronunciation correct. If you go ahead and unmute, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes.
Sure. My name is Glenn Rehing, the last name spelled R E I H I N G. I live at 524 61st Street South, St. Petersburg.
Thank you.
And I'd like to address you from an ER nurse that has been neck deep in staffing issues and flu epidemics. There's a, I want to touch on the subject of staffing. The hospitals do have a very legitimate valid concern because you can have all the beds you want, but as long as you don't have a trained nursing staff to do that, to take care of those patients, you're, you're still going to be overtaxing the current, the current staff that you already have. And that's not a good thing because tired people make mistakes. The, but there's a federal program out there called the National Disaster Medical System that in the time of where a medical system is overwhelmed, they run out of the VA, they can augment the existing medical structure. And it hasn't been used for this pandemic. Now, the offs, off sides of this is because I think it's robbing Peter to pay Paul because those members are medical volunteers from other hospitals. So you might be pulling somebody from Texas over to Florida to do it, or Arizona, or some other hotspot where they can't afford it. So I want to kind of put that on your radar, that you might want to look into the National Disaster Medical System for some relief in staffing issues. The other thing is, and I want to put this more on the radar of Dr. Jamison's and Dr. Cho's, is that there's been, there's been a little less talk, but a lot more literature on the aerosolization of COVID-19. And with the upcoming, you know, push to put the kids back into schools, I hate to be the bearer of bad tidings, but you need to look at your ventilation systems and if they're adequate to, uh, in public schools, to see if they're adequate.
Mr. Rehing, your, your, your time has expired, sir.
Okay, thank you. And Doc, Commissioner Welch, love your background.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is John S. I don't have a last name. So John, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board. And John, you'll have to unmute on your side. Hello?
Hello, uh, that was my husband, but he's not currently here. So I'll take this.
For the, for the record, can we have your name, ma'am, first, last name and address?
My name is Emma. I live in Dunedin. I'm not giving you my address.
Understood.
I watched a meeting last week and I'm still waiting for Commissioner Seal to apologize for her very rude and out of line suggestion that ADA exempt people stay home. There is like, how about the whole idea of quarantine? Is you quarantine sick people, not those of us that are healthy? That's number one. Number two, if masks work, why do we need social distancing? If social distancing works, why do we need masks? Y'all don't make any sense. You're hypocrites. And if this is really that big of an issue, why aren't you stopping those peaceful protests? None of them are social distancing and hardly any of them are wearing masks. You're worrying about the explosion of the pandemic being contagious and all this other stuff, yet you have thousands of people standing around on the pier last night, blocking traffic and infecting others when one of the BLM protest leaders is positive. Why isn't he being quarantined? You keep talking about all of us having to quarantine and you shutting down our businesses, but yeah, hypocrite much? Do something about that. Don't worry about us healthy people. Worry about the sick people. Quarantine them because that's what quarantine is all about. Not quarantining all of us that are healthy. So, and again, Commissioner Seal, still waiting on your apology. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Karen Mullins. Ms. Mullins, welcome back. If you can give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Karen Mullins, M U L L I N S, 678 Oakwood Drive, Dunedin, Florida, 34698. I want to say we are behind the eight ball. We did not get support from the Sheriff's Department on this, nor the state's Florida Health Department. We need masks mandatory everywhere. We need six feet distancing with the masks, unlike the person who was erroneously, um, stated erroneously that neither one works. How can we move forward in this economy if we keep moving backwards? We're looking for leadership. We're not getting it from the governor. Governor DeSantis will not step up. Sheriff Gutierrez will not stand up and Dr. Cho will not stand up for us. We have to do this ourselves. We have inadequate testing. We are going to send thousands of children to school with teachers who do not know if they're going to get sick leave, if they come down with the virus, if they're going to get paid for it. We do not know what this is going to do. This is going to be mandatory and our county is not ready. I'm looking for you for leadership. Commissioner Welsh, I do like your background. Thank you so much for standing up for what's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just remind people that we have no authority over what the school system does, although we are consulting with them about the entire epidemic.
I'm sure we have two remaining speakers on the line. The next one is on the phone line, last four digits, 7173. If you'll go ahead and give us your first and last name, spelling and address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Robert Radomski, last name R A D O M S K I, 814 Narcissus Avenue, Clearwater Beach. I've heard a couple of callers this week and over the past couple of meetings urging the board to close beaches. Hasn't been a huge issue today, but it maybe it's just the first thing that comes to mind for some people, but it's, it's counterproductive and, um, I believe, um, you know, and the CDC has made clear that the highest probability of virus transmission is through crowded indoor settings or prolonged indoor exposure to infected person. If there's any further restrictions put in place, um, I think that's where the board should, should focus. I'm not even sure there's ever been a case anywhere where someone's picked up the virus at the beach. We've all seen that Miami-Dade County, what they're doing, closing restaurants, also shutting ballrooms, banquet facilities, party venues, gym fitness centers, and it even listed short-term rentals, um, which is kind of odd. Should the board find it necessary to consider any of those actions? I urge you to look at each one carefully and not bucket them all. Short-term rentals in particular, um, they really don't fit in the same categories as other businesses, uh, that Miami's closing. Uh, short-term rentals by design are offer a safe, non-public environment. They're not congregate settings. Uh, short-term rentals play host to people visiting local family members, business travelers looking for a safer alternative to a hotel, honeymoon couples, small families looking to have some semblance of a relaxing beach getaway while getting takeout and maybe preparing their own meals. So if considering additional business closures, please don't include short-term rentals in the way Miami-Dade has. Short-term rentals are part of the solution. They're not part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, our last speaker is Tammy Vasquez. Ms. Vasquez, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Vasquez, last name V A S Q U E Z. I reside in Treasure Island, Florida. Um, I'm not calling in to argue masks or any, quite honestly, any of that because everyone has their own opinions. But I do want to speak up for the businesses of Pinellas County, specifically small businesses. I continually hear, you know, callers and, and the commission constantly blame businesses for the reason that the numbers are going up. And quite frankly, it's outrageous. The last time that you guys decided to close all of our businesses and bankrupt a lot of us, the last time, Publix was open, Home Depot's open, Lowe's is open. So it, it's predominantly the small businesses that are being targeted, and it's just absolutely ludicrous. You cannot continually blame the businesses of Pinellas County for this. Nobody mentions the, the increase of the numbers being increase in testing or even protest. I saw protesters out here this weekend unmasked, side by side. Nobody brings that up. I'm a firm believer in the right to protest, absolutely 100%. However, the 100% of the blame is being put on the small businesses of Pinellas County. And if you choose to close down businesses again, I, I know that you're going to leave the big stores open. You're going to leave the, the Home Depots and the Lowe's and the Publix of Pinellas County open, and it will just absolutely destroy our economy. So I just beg all of you to consider that. You can't destroy a county's economy on the basis of saying you're keeping us safe. Because if you destroy us economically, you're not keeping us safe. So I just, please, I implore you to think about that before you even slightly consider closing Pinellas County again. The sheriff has been an amazing voice of reason. I beg you to listen to him. He believes in his people and so do I, but thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, we did have one other hand go up. So Jamie McNamara, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jamie McNamara, 2131 Ridge Road South in Largo. Uh, I really just put my hand up to echo exactly what the previous caller just stated. You know, the small businesses in Pinellas County are doing, I think, more to try to keep our residents safe and our customers safe so that we don't end up in a situation like we're in. Uh, and I agree that, that the sheriff has been a voice of reason. I, I would urge you, like she said, to listen to him, but we're, I, I beg you, as she does, to please not shut down small and local businesses. Because, you know, it, my business is my money and my livelihood. And if I don't keep my employees and my customers safe, I don't have that business. So, uh, you know, as I said, public. So, you know, as I said, Publix and Home Depot and those things have been open. But to shut down the county economy, you know, is going to do more harm than good, I think. I just, you know, I think the last caller made a really good point. I just wanted to kind of reiterate and support that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Madam Chair, we have no other speakers that wish to be heard on this item.
Madam Chair, so we have two things. One, Dr. Cho has some information regarding the hospital planning that I think you were kind informative for him to cover. But I did want to clarify, and I certainly don't want to get into debate over the public comment, but just to remind the public that we have not closed businesses. The only time where that occurred, it occurred from the governor. And the governor issued the stay-at-home and made it for to where you could not go, leave your house except for essential services. It was his order that allowed a Home Depot, you know, or a Publix to remain open. And it was certainly not the commission's direction or decision to close small business. So just one clarification, because I've heard that before. And, you know, there's a lot of different layers of government and actions being taken. So just clarification. But I would like Dr.
I just want to thank you for saying that. I mean, we're going out of our way to not close businesses again. And to be blamed, we are not blaming small business. These are individuals that choose not to wear masks. You know, we're trying to get everybody to comply with that so we don't have to close businesses.
Remember, you know, before the governor's action, we took the safer at home. We were trying to get to a point where we did not have to close. And this commission threw a lot of discussion, debate, and a lot of criticism, you know, was trying to find every means possible not to close business. And so we did that as a result of governor's action. It was not our action. There was never an order that we had to close local businesses. But anyway, I would like Dr. Cho to cover the issue on the hospital search planning. I think he has some additional information for you.
I just wanted to clarify that the hospitals are meeting pretty frequently, regularly with community partners. They have been doing the search plannings. We did send out with our work group a survey as to different stages. I can tell you that the hospitals are on various phases of their surge planning. And I think to some degree, that's resulted in what you've seen in the news for AT&amp;B Care stepping back on elective procedures to free up both staffing and the space. So I think that's important, that the work is occurring. I think in the past, they mentioned that they could up surge to over 150% really early on in the pandemic. It's a matter of circling back with them and confirming if those numbers are still hold true today. So, and as soon as we get more concrete numbers, you can certainly share with this group.
I also wanted to mention that what we heard this morning was that we still have capacity with testing, particularly at the what is that, kind of field site? And we do have another facility coming onboard this week that will do drive-in testing.
We're going to announce that later this afternoon. I'm sure the public's going, why are we not doing that now? Well, as of 10 minutes ago, we still didn't have the swaps because the test kits came without swaps. And so, and as we do with anything, we open up and then you navigate and you deal and coordinate. So they're working to get, work out all the kinks in that site today. Once we know that we have everything and the capability, and the state did support us. We've got over 30 nurses down there, and they're working out all the kinks of that site. We'll be announcing it later, but we want the kinks to be worked out prior to having, you know, cars lined up, so.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for giving me an opportunity to make just a couple of points because listening to the speakers makes me sometimes cringe about all of the perceptions being formed by them watching and listening to our meetings. And I don't think they realize or understand the incredible amount of work that is going on behind the scenes amongst our staff and the coordination. I mean, this is a very transient area that we live in, and our economy is so driven by our tourism, as we all know. But that said, an awful lot of people are coming across the bridge. And the actions that we take really are so much more powerful if they're done in coordination with our partner counties, Hillsborough, Manatee, Pasco. And that takes an enormous amount of effort. I do think I'd like to recommend one thing, if I might, Barry, with regard to our communications team and the work that they're putting out. Thank you so much for all that they're doing. I know they're working really, really hard. But I haven't seen anything in their messaging that speaks to the necessity for maintaining the healthy environment of the masks that they're wearing, if they're cloth masks. And so I'd like to see some effort within our messaging to ask people to wear their masks safely, and if they're cloth, to make sure they launder them, keep them clean, so they're not at risk of making themselves sick, you know, themselves. And I'd also like to, are we going to have, Madam Chair, an opportunity at the end of our meeting to just talk about a few other things that I think are important for us to discuss?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Commissioner Seal?
Well, I just wanted to clarify and offer an apology if my message and words were misunderstood concerning masks. I talked about ADA and medically compromised in the same sentence. So let me clarify. I certainly understand and support the fact that anyone who has an ADA exemption, they're exempted from wearing masks. And there's a lot of other exemptions that exist as well. But that being said, and I'll leave it there, I do want to mention that if somebody is medically compromised and has underlying conditions, I would urge them to stay at home. And that's what I had said previously, but again, I obviously had not communicated it adequately. Finally, you know, please, everyone, you know, CDC guidelines. And Commissioner Long, thank you for saying that about washing masks. I washed my cloth masks yesterday, and I alternate different masks, including the blue, you know, kind of surgical mask and alternate them through days. So anyone who is wearing masks, be, you know, mindful of good hygiene as far as that's concerned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters?
Yes, I want to thank Commissioner Long for bringing that up as well. So, and I really do encourage that we increase the communications on that. And again, as I was trying to point out last week, if it gets wet, they need to change it. And so I think that needs to be communicated that, you know, have several with you if you work outside because you need to change it if it gets wet for health reasons. Also, I would like to see, which I haven't seen, is communications regarding the ADA. There's been a lot of angry episodes. I've received several letters from people who have mental illness, and that isn't a health compromise, physical health, but it is a mental health compromise. And so if we can also include in some communications about being respectful for people that can't wear one, you can't just assume that they're being defiant. And some of the confrontations that people have had to endure has been pretty painful. And for some have triggered some, some mental health issues. So if we can also include in our communications some kind of communication about sensitivity, not everybody can wear one, and I know people feel that everybody should just because they can. But that's not the case. Everybody can't just because some other people can. So I would really appreciate if we would include that communication as well as the frequent washing and if it gets wet, to change it frequently. So, thank you.
Commissioner Peters, I would just like to address that because there's two pieces to that. And Joel's on the line. She can certainly address this. So our ordinance says that you can self-exempt. You say you have an issue, you have a medical necessity from wearing a mask, you can self-exempt yourself out. Paperwork's not required. There are businesses, however, that have a mask mandate and they have a policy. So we can't advise them on ADA issues. And so it's real difficult for us to put information out when you get into what businesses choose to do as a policy for themselves. But so from our policy, it says that you do not have to produce documentation that if you say that you have that, and that's it. But it becomes trickier when a business has a policy that requires anybody coming in to wear a mask. I did consult with Joel on that, and so it's a little bit more problematic for us to be able to try to advise people on something that really is a legal issue.
So I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying is people are getting attacked. And there is a respect out there that must be communicated, that people should not be attacking other people because they have ADA issues. And so it's more a sensitivity issue than mandating to businesses. And I also believe that many businesses are not educated on the fact that they do have to have some alternative solution to ADA issues, just like you have to have a ramp if you don't, you know what I'm saying? So I think a lot of businesses don't understand that. And so all I'm asking is that we communicate, at least at a minimum, sensitivity so people are not getting attacked because they are. And if there's any way that there's even communications about the ADA rules, Jewel and I talked about this extensively, and she said if you cannot, you know, that you have to offer some kind of alternative that's equitable. And I think businesses don't know that they're not offering the equitable alternatives like they have to do just like access with a ramp or an elevator or something else. And so, again, I'm just asking for communication so people are not getting attacked because they are. I had lunch with a gentleman the other day outside, and he said that he nearly went into a psychotic break. He had a real, real problem when he got attacked in a Publix. And so I really think there's a, there's a strong issue, a health issue. It might be a mental health issue, but it is a strong issue. And so even those that have physical issues, both maybe asthma or something else, it's still an issue, and they shouldn't be getting attacked for it. And so I just think we need, in our communications, to include that kind of information so that the attacks that are happening out in the community may be understood a little better.
We'll review that. We do have that information. We added that to our FAQs. So, but we'll review our information and try to put that out. But I know that, and the only reason I say it, I'm not arguing with you, is because I heard that from the Retailers Association also. Commissioner Justice and I had a call the other day with the Retailers Association, and there is a concern that you're a frontline worker. People are being, you know, turning to them, and all they simply did is ask that somebody put on a mask. You know, and if they, and so it become confrontational. I know, you know, it's an issue. It's very hard, though, because we can't have a cop in every store. And so from an enforcement standpoint, you know, asking somebody just to ask people, we'll clarify that, you know, that as long as they ask and they help. But, you know, the harder part is why people are pushing back so much and becoming violent when a store clerk simply asked for somebody, put on a mask, and, you know, and if they said, hey, I have a medical issue, then they drop it at that point. But we are getting those confrontations, and I do feel for them. And so, you know, I understand, I do understand the concern and that issue because it is real. It's very difficult to address, though, but we'll look at our information and see if we can put some additional clarification regarding that.
Okay, I was thinking sensitivity communications. Thank you.
I think there's room for tolerance all the way around, and people trying to understand each other. Emotions are running really high. And I think, you know, Sheriff Bob has said several times, it's about personal responsibility. And can't we all just get along? For heaven's sakes, we don't, not everything needs to be a war.
Well, we'll look at our information to what we can do.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we're looking at extending the state of emergency for another week. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second with a comment.
Okay.
My only comment, I want to just, since this is a public meeting, address the surge question that I think Ms. Walker brought up, and I didn't want to give the impression that we're just asking about this. I know in every 8:00 meeting we've been on, that extra surge capacity has been spoken about. In my one-on-ones with Barry, we've talked about the extra surge capacity. So it's just a matter of translating that to our dashboard was the reason I brought that up today. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And we have, the reason we need to survey is to get up-to-date information. This changes what back in April, we had the capability to stand up a field hospital. We were prepared. Okay, so we had the surge plan. And you first want to have hospitals maintain in their existing facilities. Then they have a surge capacity, and then we have other options. So we have prepared throughout this. This is just the latest because we've got a, an increase, everything's changed over the last two weeks. We need to get, we know it's about 150%, but we'll get those numbers to you. But just for the public standpoint, we have prepared options and alternatives throughout this entire period.
And it's something that they talk about almost constantly, so don't be afraid that they're not dealing with it. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next, she was the Caris program. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, I just got a quick message, and I think this is important because, Barry, you said this is the businesses have done this. But what I've gotten, and somebody just reminded me about this, and it's from a chamber, says that the businesses are doing this because they feel that they have to, and they're going to lose their license if they don't enforce it and make everybody come in with one. So I think when you work on that FAQ, yes, we're mandating masks, but I think the businesses, are they going to lose their license? And I know the city of St. Petersburg is doing something different than maybe the county is. But I think the county needs to make it clear, understood that maybe they are taking that hard line because they misunderstand, and they're very afraid they're going to lose their license. And I've already talked to three businesses and said, you know, as long as you're giving a good effort, showing that you're trying to do your best, you're not going to lose your license. And I think that's true. So if you'd at least correct me if I'm wrong, or let me know if that's true, and if you'd be willing in your communications to address that because if they're being, if they're taking that hard line because they think they're going to lose their license, and therefore they can't be flexible for the ADA reasons, I think that's important to address that if their perception is that, that we need to clarify if that perception is wrong.
Well, I can try to clarify it, but let me, this is a local ordinance violation. You made it clear this is not a criminal, okay? So it's not tied to somebody's license, liquor license. But we do hold both the business and the customers accountable for the mask ordinance. Right now, what does that mean? And, you know, that's where we look at our information and we see if there are, because I also, you know, if a business tries to enforce it, and somebody says, no, I'm not going to wear a mask. Okay, they made a good faith effort. But what happens when a business says, hey, you know, I don't really care, come on in? You know, then, I mean, because most, we're getting, most people complying by having it in place. And we know that slows the community spread. This is a pandemic. We're trying to help the community, help us not to get to higher numbers, help us not to have to take additional measures. And so we're asking that everybody be in and part of the solution on this. If a business is really taking a good faith effort, the sheriff's on the line, he can address this. He's the one that's out there on the front line of this, and they're really trying. Well, they're not going to have an issue if one person, because again, our own ordinance says you can self-exempt yourself out if you have a medical condition. So, but businesses, and on the call the other day, they said that they only should have to put up a sign. Well, you know, the problem is, is if the majority of people will remember, they put on their mask, well, then that helps to solve that issue. So we need, it needs to be something more than that. At the same time, we understand that we don't expect them to tackle somebody at the door for the enforcement of our policy, you know, separate from their policy. And we certainly don't want them to get into a physical confrontation with paper because they won't comply. We have pride to make that clarification. We can work on that. But it's really hard because I also don't want to wink and a nod from a business that says, hey, just tell me you can't, you know, hey, tell me you're exempt, you know, or something like that. We want to get compliance because we know it helps. You know, you heard other people on the calls today, they're concerned about their health. And the more we do, and the more we get compliance, the better our community will be. So, yes, we're going to work with our businesses. We're not looking to enforce that this, hold them accountable, but we need them to help us.
So that's exactly what I wanted to hear you say. But I think it's also important to hear, and we didn't do this earlier, and before the public comment, I kind of wish we had. The sheriff has been out and about, and, you know, I heard on the call his comments about what's going on in the businesses and what's going on in the streets, and The sheriff has been out and about and, you know, I heard on the call his comments about what's going on in the businesses and what's going on in the streets and are people complying? And I think, I think it would behoove us, and I know I don't want to be legal this meeting, but I think maybe Sheriff, if you don't mind repeating what you said earlier, I think it's important that people know what's going on and if people are complying and if people are not complying. So whether it was the beaches or the businesses, I I I hope you don't mind, but I really think it's worth the public hearing what you're seeing because not everybody's going out. And so and and people are afraid and they're not going out. So at least if they can hear from you what you're seeing, that would be great. Thank you.
No, I'm glad to do it, but I thought I almost made it through a whole meeting without talking. That was my goal, but anyway. Actually, in all seriousness, what we're seeing is really are seeing people comply. The number of calls that we're getting on a daily basis about mask complaints is very, very minimal. Maybe fifteen, twenty, the last couple of days, they're in the five, 10 range. Are getting some complaints about businesses and bars that are not in compliance. So the absolute majority of those, when we go out, we find that they are actually in compliance. What I really encourage everybody to do, I know it's hard and it, but I think it's simply written. Is the best you can and the county's done a great job and Barbara Hernandez, her staff and the PIOs have done a great job in in messaging summary information. But take a look at the ordinance, take a look at the orders and they're very easy to understand. They're plainly written. And gain some understanding of what is involved in these because as an example, a lot of the complaints we're getting on the bars have to do with bars that are within restaurants and 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 those are allowed. As far as the masks go, there is no requirement of signs. You had a caller that called in earlier that talked about and has some concerns about mask requirements within condos. Well, the mask ordinance is inapplicable to condos. It is only in indoor spaces that are accessible to the public. So as an example, if you take a condo building and you take a common room, the public doesn't have access to that. That would be only residents of the building. And there is no requirement of signs. Say it again, is that it's all about personal responsibility, good judgment, common sense. And I really think from what we are seeing out there, what the deputies are telling me, what I'm seeing personally from the feedback we're getting, this is that people really are stepping up and you're never going to have perfect, you're not going to have 100%. And just understand that when somebody is within a business and that person doesn't have a mask on, they're, I I would suggest to you assume because there are so many people that are doing it, that there's a legitimate reason why that person isn't wearing it. And simply create the space. Remember, it it's about masks or distancing or ideally both, but if you can't have both, then have one or the other. And so because there's a number of exceptions and it's been stated here many times, it's about health. There's a physical barrier exception. There's all kinds of things in there. And, you know, just give people the benefit of the doubt that they really are trying to do the right thing and and have patience and again, good common sense and judgment. But this weekend on the beaches, the beaches were less crowded this weekend than the busiest day over Memorial Day weekend. And and that's what we're seeing up and down the beaches. So overall in the community, from the feedback, from what we're seeing on the on the ground, the calls that we're getting in the communication center, et cetera. I'm very pleased with where we are and what we're seeing as far as responsiveness from the community. I really think it would just go a long way if everybody just familiarized themselves and good judgment, common sense, worry about yourself and let everybody else take care of themselves. I think by and large, they are right now from what we're seeing and it's a great thing. And if somebody's not wearing a mask, assume that there's a legitimate reason why not. As far as the businesses go, differentiate this from other counties, other counties. And I think that may be Commissioner Peters where you're getting that from. In other counties, they have put the onus on the business to be the enforcer. That's not what this ordinance is. And it doesn't put the onus on them. And so I I I think that's where we are. But I can tell you from what I've seen, especially in the last week or so, I think overall the community is is being very responsive to this and is doing a good job and we just need to keep doing what we're doing.
Okay. We can move along now to Pinellas Cares.
Barry, you're muted.
I saw that. So as you're aware, under phase one, we we had a both a business program for physical brick and mortar businesses that were enabled them to get funding early on in the program and also one for individuals. We have since obviously looked to expand that. It was was the original plan. More importantly, we asked Aubrey Phillips, your, what do you call it, facilitator extraordinaire to really go out and do some community survey work to make sure that we're looking at this from all aspects of our community. She has worked with a team, including, you know, Daisy and Mike Midell and many, many others to put together a program that tries to address the balance that I think needed was as needed as part of this program. As you're also aware from our previous conversation, we've also really changed a lot of what we need to be able to address deficiencies because of this recent surge. And so it incorporates all of that as well. So I've asked her to give you an outline of the program, the recommendations for your consideration today.
Thank you, Barry. And Brian's pulling up the presentation for today. So as Barry mentioned, Pinellas County did receive funding through the Federal Cares Act to address unforeseen financial needs and risks. Thousands have received assistance, emergency financial relief through the Pinellas Cares programs that the board approved on April 28th. However, to inform the development of new Pinellas Cares programs and better understand the public's perspective on those most pressing needs related to COVID-19, we engage the community through both a representative survey and a community conversation. And through this engagement, some clear themes emerged around priorities of providing assistance to individuals, families and local businesses and responding to and mitigating the public health impacts of COVID-19. We also heard a lot of feedback about the initial Cares programs and the need for greater applicant technical support and follow up as well as opportunities to improve awareness of and access to available Cares programs. So this feedback is reflected in the approach that we've were recommending. And this approach leverages those community partnerships as well as professional service providers to improve applicant access and assistance while constraining administrative costs and giving us a flexible program to adapt to changing needs. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So our understanding, as as you all were discussing earlier this morning, our understanding of the impacts from COVID-19 continue to evolve and for this reason.
Looks like you froze.
Oh, can you still hear me okay?
Mr. Gerard, can you hear okay?
Brian, can we get her back?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you, but yeah, okay.
I'll I'll keep going then and the slide should be up there. So as these, as our understanding of these impacts change, it's important for us to have flexibility needed to adapt and respond quickly to the needs of the community as they become more clear. So to support this, we're recommending a flexible framework that provides short term relief to support public health as well as a sustained economic recovery. It's clear that these two things are intricately interlinked. What we're recommending is that authority be delegated to the county administrators to implement programs, establish partnerships and associate agreements and adjust the funds dedicated to each program. Informed by the public input that we spoke of, this framework reflects recommended Cares programs that are intended to equitably address the most pressing needs resulting from COVID-19. And our focus has been on economic recovery and resiliency for our individuals, families and local businesses as well as public health mitigation and response to slow community spread. So while we expect to make modifications as we see the change, the needs evolve and change, estimated investments in the program are split roughly evenly between support for individuals and families, local business recovery and resiliency grant programs and COVID-19 public health mitigation and response. In addition to leveraging community partnerships to administer these individual and business assistance program, we have identified less than 1% of funding that we're recommending to expand capacity for existing community partners to serve as geographically focused navigators. This is based directly on what we heard from the the community in terms of awareness of and access to our existing programs. Navigators really serve to help raise awareness of and facilitate individuals and local businesses applying for the programs that are available. And we recognize and appreciate that many community leaders and organizations are already serving the community in this capacity. Additional resources through Pinellas Cares would help to maximize those continuing resources and make sure that we're able to get resources where they're needed to improve access. A selection process would be used to identify those navigators that have existing relationships with communities that have barriers to access and to provide information and assistance in a manner that's culturally and linguistically appropriate for the needs of the population. With so many residents and information overload, navigators are a cost effective strategy for helping to supplement existing community resources and get the help programmed through this Pinellas Cares program to the individuals and businesses that have been impacted. Next, we'll go into more detail on those three key areas. So overall, as I mentioned, roughly one third of the funding is recommended to support economic recovery and resiliency for individuals and families impacted by COVID-19. Unemployment rates have reached historic highs. We're continuing to see those trends evolve and deepen. Three programs as a result are recommended to help bridge the gap for families, address basic needs and help workers return to full employment. So last week, the existing program providing financial assistance with overdue rent, mortgage and utility payments for individuals and families that have lost income as a result of COVID was extended. Recognizing that the ongoing impacts to individuals and families are continuing, we're recommending an expansion of the current financial assistance program in continued collaboration with Tampa Bay Cares 211. This would expand eligibility to individuals and families with $10,000 or less in liquid assets that have lost their job or significant income due to COVID-19. It increases the cumulative maximum per household award to $5,000. And applicants who did not previously qualify for the program or who have already received help but need additional assistance for overdue bills can reapply. Through community engagement, we heard a lot of concerns, as you all have heard it as well, about the impacts of COVID-19 on food and housing security, homelessness, as well as behavioral health. So a second program would provide support for the nonprofit organizations that are providing services to address these basic needs directly related to COVID-19. Supplementing these programs aimed at offsetting the immediate impacts on individuals and families, a workforce, reemployment, retraining and placement would be intended to get residents, help residents get back on their feet after suffering a loss of income due to COVID-19 impact.
I ask a question about that.
Certainly.
Are we planning on doing that ourselves or contracting with Career Source or something?
Yes, we're planning to partner with Career Source. They have existing reemployment, retraining and placement programs. So this would supplement that effort. Yeah, we're trying not to recreate the wheel. We want to leverage existing efforts wherever possible. So moving on to our local business program. Again, about a third of the funding here for local businesses, the bulk of the funding is intended to provide grants to bridge the gap for local businesses most impacted as a result of COVID-19. So while the initial program focused on those businesses that were storefronts that were forced to close as a result of the governor's order, this program would be open to more businesses that have been impacted due to COVID-19. It would open up to businesses that have more than 25 employees with eligibility based on annual revenues of under 3 million or less. The grant award amount would be a sliding scale ranging from $2,500 to $10,000 based on their 2019 gross revenue. It would include businesses, as I mentioned, with more than 25 employees as well as those home based businesses that don't occupy commercial space. This, these changes to the program have allowed us to simplify the documentation requirements and ensure that these funds can get out to the businesses that have been impacted the most quickly. To provide more comprehensive support for local businesses, we heard about a lot of different areas that were not addressed through a central program. So four smaller grant programs are intended to target specific needs and gaps. So those include grants to licensed childcare facilities to help mitigate the impact of low enrollment and increased costs. Those are intended to supplement gaps in state assistance, reimbursement matching grants, buttressing the county's previous support for qualified target industries and providing matching costs for those target industry businesses that have implemented COVID-19 related health and safety precautions. We also have two micro grants that are being recommended, one focused on our arts community, which frequently professional artists, arts and creative businesses may have different business models that make them ineligible for the primary local business grant program. And so this provides a path to ensure that our arts community is supported through this time. Finally, we know from public input and experience with our initial programs that a number of businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19 have fallen through the cracks and that they cannot qualify for County Cares Act funding either due to language barriers, technology deficits, a lack of business acumen or record keeping and a variety of other barriers. So to address those, we've developed a business or we're developing a business diversity micro grant program and that would combine financial assistance with capacity building so that those businesses can be eligible for this funding, financial assistance, as well as future programs that may be available through the state and federal governments.
I just have a comment about that. My concern all along has been our inability to get money out to individuals. And larger, from what I'm hearing, it largely has to do with that documentation issue and it sounds to me like we're removing barriers for businesses. I didn't hear anything about removing barriers for individuals. So maybe if you could expound on that a little bit.
Thank you. Yes, I glossed over that pretty quickly, but yes, we've taken the same kind of approach to our individual assistance program. So some of the changes that I mentioned in terms of removing the income eligibility requirement have resulted in allowing us to simplify those documentation requirements as well so that the process can move move more quickly.
But I guess I would also like us to look at the kinds of things that we're asking for. Bank account records, many of the people that need help don't have bank accounts. You know, documentation from employers that closed their business don't even have, they can't even contact these employers anymore. I'm concerned about that, that we've put up barriers that make sense to us, but to the people that need help, it's.
And Aubrey, before, we have, we have Lorna Stacey on the line to kind of address this. And the reason I I I think it's a very good point, Commissioner, these are not our requirements. We're trying to look at the minimum necessary from an audit standpoint, from the federal government. These are requirements on us that we have to be able to document that. So I want them to go through that process because we, you know, you've challenged them in the past, make this as simple as possible. And so lies, so maybe they can kind of address that to your point. And and what about an individual that simply doesn't, can't come up with documentation?
And I guess I'd like to see what those regulations are. You know, what is it?
Yeah, so what we've changed, Barry, is now we'll use an attestation form. So the individual can just testify, right, basically sign their name on a form regarding their assets, regarding their income, especially what Commissioner Gerard just indicated, if their employer is no longer around. So all of that has been removed. We no longer have a federal poverty level, which was at 200%. Basically now it's you would have had to reduce your income or lost your job. And then the assets are higher, but again, you can fill out that form and sign off on it.
So we're taking that risk on if they, if the federal government comes back on us, then obviously we'd have to go back to the individual. They did an audit per se and then make them produce documentation at that point.
And then the other question I have is do people have to scan these documents and send them to you? Because 95% of the public does not have the ability to scan a document and send it to you.
That's correct. So what we do is they can take a picture. And if they can't, we have set up some navigators that are already helping through the Juvenile Welfare Board at the neighborhood centers that can assist with that. But you could just take a picture and send it. You don't need a scanner, you don't need a fax.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No, you're perfectly fine. Just waiting for the slides to come back up. All right, so the remaining third of the funding would support COVID-19 public health mitigation and responses. As you all were discussing earlier, it's important that we have local capacity to expand testing, contact tracing, skilled nursing or other medical services that that may be needed by the community. This would also allow us to ensure sufficient personal protective equipment, community health education and other public health measures to protect from and respond to COVID-19. As well as these investments in public health generally. Pinellas County is the only local government entity that received coronavirus relief fund monies. So one of the things that you see in here is reimbursement of some local government COVID-19 mitigation and response costs that have been incurred.
Well, I just wanted to point out that, as we heard on our call this morning, in our request for assistance to the state, we're being asked, have we exhausted all our Cares Act money already? And which.
It's a little chicken in the egg.
Well, it is, but you know, okay. Are you going to help us or not?
Commissioner, it is a changing dynamic. One of the things we did learn, so you know, we, we had, you know, up until this latest surge in cases, you know, we'd spend a little over $5 million, and frankly, we were going to simply go off of a FEMA reimbursement, you know, and then that was put 12 and a half percent of that cost on us. And we would just find that, you know, we were trying to get money out to individuals and families and businesses. What we've seen over those last couple of weeks is a huge need for PPE to be able to support our nursing homes, our hospitals, our first responders. And so we've ramped up and purchased a lot more PPE to be able to keep that flow and make sure we're ready. And we're going to continue to do that. And so, so we're going to be spending more money. I've also heard from our local governments, well, before I get off of the county government, even on the testing. You know, we're, you know, we're, right now, we're okay. We, we, we did be able to get test kits. But we're also prepared to purchase some of it. That's what we need to do to keep our residents, you know, safe and their ability to get a test. So, so we're prepared to be able to take whatever measures are necessary.
We're paying, we're paying quite a bit of the cost of the, of the Mafy Theater site, aren't we?
Well, we've gotten those costs down. So Mafy's been a good partner, and they're, they're, they're not charging us, but, but the stand-up of the site is our, is our staff and our equipment and things like that. So they, they're, they're being a good partner now. And so we're, we're working through the administrative, and you just said it, so. But yeah, so they, those things are, we will have some cost involved with that, but minor. It's a lot of staff time, you know, and, and, but we will have other costs like that. But again, we, we'll, this is where we're going to have to kind of watch the program, and it'll have to change as we go. I have a call this afternoon, a city call, and we're going to survey our community partners to determine what type of costs they've incurred. Then we can make a determination whether we do reimbursement out of this pot of the money or whether we match their FEMA. And so we give them the 12 and a half percent, and then we get, they get the FEMA dollars on the backend. That'll be an evolving process because obviously we have to use this money by December 31st, and we will. But we may wait till the end to see if, you know, if that money is spent on the other community-based programs or whether there are sufficient funds to be able to do the direct reimbursement. So some of that will have to play out over time.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, and you know, I'm not sure how much you want to get into this today, but you mentioned this morning about if we have to bring in more nurses in the state saying, have we expended that money? Are we prepared then to shift some of that money to pay for nurses coming in?
Yes, and that's a reason that if you notice, it gives me pretty broad authority, and I will certainly, you know, obviously work, you know, through this commission in terms of when we make those decisions. But if I, if I need to ship funds and bring in nurses, because that's the only way we stand up our emergency rooms, I will do that. You know, we're asking them, you know, the hospitals and our community partners to do that first, through their resources, through their billing methods. You know, it's the same way with nursing homes. You know, if we, we would have stood up the site over, you know, in Hillsborough County, then we just pay for that. But that means you're losing Medicaid, Medicare, private pay reimbursements. So, you know, everybody's got a payer source under that, so we obviously want to be able to access those funds first. But I'm not going to do that at the expense of not having capacity available.
Hey, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Eggers?
Yep, unmute.
You just wanted to say that. I got you.
Yeah, just, just a, the number of questions is the, went through the presentation. So on the expanding pool for residential use, we, I think we had allowed in June for repeat customers. In other words, folks that had been approved for the month, in the month of May, they were now approved for the month of June. Are those, are those people still allowed? And are those people, are those folks being reflected in the numbers that we're seeing? In other words, are, is, are we getting an expanded pool of folks in, in June and early July? Or is it some of the same folks coming back for the second and third month? So just, just a quick question. I have several others, but we could answer one at a time.
So I think, I think Lourdes may be best able to respond, or Daisy, on where the current programs are. But, but to your point, Commissioner Eggers, a portion of what we are seeing is repeat applications from someone who's been approved, received assistance once, next month comes, rent is overdue, they submit that overdue rent and can have that paid as well. However, the expansion that we're discussing today and are included in the resolutions before the board would expand the number of people who are eligible so that more folks are able to avail themselves of this financial assistance that would be available.
To, to that point, there's a, the percentage poverty level is not a consideration anymore. So it's just if you lost your job during this time.
Correct. What we were hearing from the public is that that federal poverty level was causing a lot of confusions where people didn't identify as low income. And so even though they had lost their jobs and didn't have any income, they were assuming that they weren't eligible. So we feel like this clarification will help folks to know that if you've lost your job or income as a result of COVID-19, that this program is available for assistance.
The, you also talked in that there was a pie chart that reflected a certain number of dollars for Navigator. And when you do the numbers, it turns out to be a one and a half million dollars for Navigator. So just maybe a little expansion on, are, are we going to include, are Chamber of Commerce is included in here if they've been part of a Navigator system to work with businesses? Or are they going to be able to access other, other places in this program? And are, are they, so that's really the question on the Navigator. I'm seeing about a one and a half million.
Yep. So we have looked at one and a half million for supplementing the work that's already being done by many community partners to provide navigation. So Lourdes mentioned JWB. We know that our chambers are also very active in helping folks find and access these resources. We do know, though, that there's specific communities that have particular barriers with accessing the program. And so this intent is that these navigators would provide complimentary support to help shore up those navigation resources, particularly in, in communities that may have barriers due to language or may not have connections to existing community partners like the Chamber.
But the Chambers and anyone else. So we're going to have a process for people to, for us to contract with them. And again, we want to do that as an expansion of current programs, not supplementing what, you know, people are already doing as a, you know, as, as a good community partner. But we're going to have a process because I know we're going to get about 100 calls right after this about, you know, we'd like to do this, and we'd like money to be able to do it. And so we're going to have a process for people to apply and, and work with us, and we'll have, and so everybody will understand that it's a fair process that we use to make those types of decisions.
Okay. But on to the local business, the business program that we're talking about. Did we address business start date, like people after October 1, if, as long as they're still in business? Are they eligible now? If they have a bricks and mortar, a location, or are they still not eligible?
So for the primary local business program, because it's based on 2019 revenue, as long as they filed their 2019 tax returns, and if they started their business at any point in 2019, they would be eligible. However, the award amount is based on their 2019 revenue. So if they didn't start their business until October, it'll be based on those three months of revenue, October, November, and December.
Yeah, and that's, that's something I think we really need to look at as well. I mean, clearly, some of these businesses are just as at risk right now. They started in January, maybe late December. And they are folks that they're still in business. They're still small business owners. They're still trying to make ends meet. And I think that's, that's an area that we're, we're going to, we're going to miss out on as well. So I just, just, I think we need to really look at that. And then the other question I have is we've expanded the dollar amount, or we widened it, instead of 5,000, from 2,500 to 10,000. So if a previous business owner applied and got a $5,000 grant, can they reapply? And because they still have room under the new program for 10,000, for up to another $5,000, is that still eligible? I'm not sure what the criteria are for that range, but there may be some that qualify.
Yes. So businesses that received assistance through the initial program would be eligible if they're eligible for a higher-level award under this new program would be eligible to receive the difference there. However, the program is designed to focus on getting to those businesses that weren't, didn't receive funding in the first round of programs.
Okay. All right. Well, I do think that's, I mean, and, and do we have the, do we have the, the, the criteria that you're going to look at to determine the range, where they fall in that range? Are there, is there like a couple of things that really jump out that, that make people say, oh, you're only getting a 2,500, not 7,500?
So it's based on 2019 revenues, and that was intended to be a fair way to, an equitable way to size the award amount with the size of the business. So recognizing that as we, as we open up the programs to home-based businesses, to more industries, that we're going to have more variation in the types and size of businesses that are needing funding, and that a one-size-fits-all award amount of $5,000 didn't make as much sense in that context. So this is that sliding scale is based on their 2019 gross revenues. So those on the lower end of the scale would receive the smaller amount up to the $10,000 award amount would be for businesses with over a million in, in revenues up to 3 million.
Okay, and that does make some sense. One size doesn't fit all. But again, I think that there are businesses that started in January that, that could qualify for the $2,500 normal, I mean, not normally, but, you know, from an equitable standpoint, if you've been in business for two months and in, and last year, you're probably only going to get the $2,500 more than likely, maybe not, maybe more. But same, with the same argument is for January and February. If you started in January, then you're, you're out. And to me, that we've got to find a way to bring those folks back in. And right now, that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steele, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. While you all have certainly worked very hard on this program, I am happy about simplifying the document, documentation requirements. And so going to the individuals, it states applied retroactive to prior applicants. So will we automatically contact them, say that they're eligible, and increase that amount up to the $5,000?
So Marketing Communications has worked with us to develop messaging that would go out to those who have already applied through the initial programs to make them aware of these new programs that would be available.
Okay. But obviously, like 211, and we have to already have a database. Are we going to go back and contact those who previously received funding?
Yes, I can go ahead and address that. So we have, for the most part, folks' text and email capability to do that. On average, the different individuals have gotten about $1,500 on average. And now if you all vote to increase it to 5,000, then we would let those folks know that we can do, you know, another month's worth of rent up to the 5,000. And we already have been doing that with the $4,000. If somebody only needed 1,400, and the next month they still needed their, a rent, then we were able to help them with that.
Okay. Do we have enough staffing at 211? I know that we were loaning some county staff. Are they still there? And do we?
Yeah, we have about, we have about 30 people, and we meet with Mickey, the CEO of 211, a couple of times a week. We have also given her more staffing as far as temp staff that we brought in and paid for with the Cares Act. And it's something that we talk about. We even, you know, went to the Foundation for Healthy St. Pete. They could give us their entire building, which is pretty huge if we needed to bring on more staff. So these are all discussions that we've had with Mickey to increase staffing.
Okay, and is, are we still having issues, especially with the evictions? So I understand that some landlords are not giving their W9s so that these rents can be paid. Are we addressing that?
That is correct. And one of the things that we've discussed is if landlords don't want to comply, how do we get around that? So we have something in place for that, and it's a one-on-one case on that.
Okay.
But some landlords don't want to do that. You're right.
And part of the funding, we also have to increase funding for legal assistance.
Yeah. Oh, okay, good. My next question is on the local businesses. The businesses with more than 25 employees, is there, are we allowing somebody who has 1,000 employees to apply, or is there a maximum level there?
So based on, and I don't know if Mike Mydell is on the call, but based on conversations with him and looking at data about the businesses in Pinellas County, by changing the requirement to be based on, or eligibility to be based on the company or business having under $3 million in revenue, that gets most of the small businesses we'd be trying to target and would add businesses up to about 50 employees. Beyond that, if they're having more than 50 employees, typically their revenues would also be up over 3 million annually. So while we've removed that specific requirement on the number of FTEs, and that helps to reduce the documentation that's required, we feel like this revenue eligibility requirement helps still make sure that it's getting to those small and local businesses that we're trying to target with the program.
Okay, next, the expenses, it says federal guidelines do not allow the Cares funds to pay for expenses that would be paid by another federal program. So if somebody got the, some money from the PPP, but they've used it already to keep people employed, would they now be eligible for our program?
So they, it depends on the cost that they are using to reimburse. Sorry, my computer battery is getting low. It depends on the cost that they're using and being reimbursed for. They could not use the Cares funds to pay for the same costs that were paid for by PPE or other federal programs. And even within our Cares programs, part of the rollout of this has to be coordination among the programs to ensure that folks aren't double-dipping between the different local Pinellas Cares programs.
Okay, and finally, for now, I'm kind of, we just received the local business eligibility law by, I guess it's by coding. And so I went through all 13 pages, and I guess one question that I really have is, what about somebody who is a computer, software, hardware consultant, or they're in another category of professional services, or they're a consultant in some way? Are they covered? Because it's not clear in, in all of this list that they would be.
Yes. So what we've tried to do is focus in on those industries that had the most impacts due to COVID-19. That does not cover every business in the county. We started with a list that was provided, or developed by UCLA's Turner Center on the industries that were most likely to experience impacts due to COVID. Our Economic Development Department then reviewed that list in the context of what we've seen here in Pinellas County. The intent is that we're narrowing this so that we're getting it to those businesses that have been most impacted. We could look at future programs after this next round that would open it up more broadly to any business. But we felt it's, it's necessary to constrain things so that those who have had the most impacts are next in, in the queue, so to speak.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, I think that, you know, I, early on when we were having this discussion, I did indicate that I thought we should open this to all businesses that have been impacted by COVID. It's not, we don't know whether one particular industry has definitely had an impact other than the study that you did, but there may be personal circumstances, or there may be business circumstances that they were prohibited for some reason to be able to do business. So how are we going to address this in a fair way so that somebody is really helped? That might not fit in this list.
Mike, are you on, are, are you part of this call?
Mike is on the line.
Yes, yes, I'm on the line. Yeah, we, and I really do believe.
Yes, yes, I'm on the line. Yeah, we, and I really do believe that we need, as I, I think that Aubrey did an excellent job of explaining where we are today. This new round of additional NAICS codes is designed to address people who were not forced to close themselves, but their customers were primarily forced to close. So their customers are retailers or hospitality industry. And we did see that and many of them tried to apply in phase one and were denied. So this will take care of most of the people who applied in the, in the first round and were denied because they were allowed to be open. What we still want to make sure that we address, we have enough money to be able to provide the services to all of those people who were directly affected because their customers are non-existent. And then we could possibly open it up again to anyone across the board. But there are significant numbers out there that need it now. And then the, going up to 50 employees, Aubrey was exactly right, that $3 million in gross revenues will only support about 50 employees. So 50 FTE or less will be the, the new range that we'd be looking at for employment.
I guess I'm still not satisfied because I think that there should be a way that you all can make exceptions. If somebody can prove that they could not access their customers, say in a computer industry or in some other industry because of, you know, the stay-at-home rules and so on. I mean, we know how that list was very difficult to analyze and to understand. So I want to make sure that we, that you all have the latitude to make some exceptions based on proof of loss of income and proof that you could not reach a customer, no matter what category you're in.
And I, I think the framework that we've put forward gives us the flexibility that is, as we see, you know, applicants who don't meet the specific criteria. If we see applications coming in, that we've got the flexibility to make those adjustments administratively and ensure that those who are being impacted by COVID-19 are, are able to get assistance.
So to, to your point specifically, Commissioner, I hear your concern. We, we do have flexibility. You delegate a lot of that. The, the concern obviously is if, you know, if we, if every single, if we just simply met out a check and I'm, I know you're not suggesting that to every single business, but then, then we, we wouldn't have sufficient funds to cover everything, right? It dilutes the amount of money we have total available. But to your point, we've got, if there are people that have been impacted by this and we get to the end, we haven't even spent the money and the track record so far is not great on that. So, you know, why wouldn't we be helping them and including them in? So if we could, we could be in the program and we can track this and report back to you and have the same conversation. But we do have the flexibility to open that up within the program criteria if we, if we chose to do that.
Okay, well, I really do want the flexibility. I'm glad to hear that you will be. I'm sure that there's many consultants in different industries that have not been able to consult with their customers because they were closed. So enough said, I just wanted to make sure that we had that flexibility and I appreciate all the answers and the hard work. I also noted that during all of the resolutions and so on, that we are giving great latitude to the county administrator to make changes and adaptations. And I just want the public to know that. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. A lot of my questions have been answered. I just think, Barry, you and your team did a great job and listened to the community and responded to what we've been hearing. You know, the navigator is the simplification, the inclusion of nonprofits and home-based businesses that we've heard a lot of that. So I appreciate all the work y'all have done. Just following up on Commissioner Seal's question, I'm looking at the overview of Pinellas CARES document, which kind of breaks down the individual and business, public health in the different categories. So the list that Commissioner Seal referenced, the eligibility list, for that first pot under local businesses, the 36.9 million, am I understanding that, that business has to be on the list to qualify for that bucket of funds? Is that correct?
That is the intent.
Okay. And a couple of lines down, we've got the matching grants for target industry. And that's using the state list or the county list. Is it the same list?
So Mike, jump in if I get this wrong, but the qualified target industries, yes, it's the same list that we use than the state definition. So those are industries that we've already been supporting as a county long before COVID.
Even though QTI is going away, right?
Correct.
Okay. So can a business qualify for the grant in that $5 million bucket and for funding in the 36.9 million dollar bucket?
No, the intent would be that a business is, is choosing one of the programs and they're receiving assistance through the program. That's the best fit for their needs. And that is one of the roles that the navigators play in helping business to evaluate what the best program for that, their particular situation would be.
Okay. And, and just again, Barry, really appreciate you including a a significant amount for public health mitigation response going forward. That's going to be important as these responsibilities kind of flow down to counties. One question that I have, and I'm not, I don't want to be critical, but the navigators are important in getting folks in the system. But even as late as this morning, I'm still hearing, and Commissioner Seal touched on it, I believe, about what happens once a person is in that system in 2-1-1. And so a message that I got this morning was from someone that applied in May and their landlord is chomping at the bit to evict us because they no longer believe the money is coming. And what they said is when we called to check on the status, we're placed on hold without any answers. And that's not the first message I've received like that. So I, I know everybody's trying to adjust and, and deal with the rush, but do we have sufficient resources at 2-1-1 or is the system functioning as it should? Or do we need to apply more resources there? And I know you've got plenty of staff there already, but that issue keeps coming up.
Lourdes, I would ask that Lourdes address this. She's been working night and day with 2-1-1 regarding this issue.
No, I actually don't disagree that we need more resources. And again, it's something that we talk with Mickey on all of the calls. She is interviewing right now. She's added some temporary staff and also interviewing more staff through the temp agency to increase that capacity. So I agree with you 100%. Every case that we get, I guess you can call it a complaint through either social media, through the Commissioner's office, we send to Mickey and she addresses. Some are accurate, some are not. How's that?
That's, that's absolutely. And I, and I know they've been responsive whenever something like this comes up and we reach out, but you know, I'm just trying to understand, is it a system issue? Is it personnel? Is the, the system itself?
Yeah, we actually have this weekend coming up. Daisy and her entire executive team is going in there to try and help and look at the processes and try and push some of the paperwork through. So anything we can think of is what we're doing.
I know you are, Lourdes. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. That was one of my questions. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Especially addressing the queue of the folks that are waiting and trying to get through the system and, and wondering how we're doing with that first two months of, I mean, I remember being somewhat frustrated in the first part of June that we were so backed up and responding to those applications. And so just wondering where we were on that one. That's the first question. The second one is on page eight of that local business eligible industries, just as an example, whether you're a consulting, if you're a consultant and you, and you do consulting work with folks on that page alone, it's pretty flexible, what types of industries that we will be dealing with. I mean, other services related to advertising. So there's a broad area. Then there's travel agency. And then there's business, schools and computer and management training. So there's even a training industry, convention and trade show organizers. So there's a whole bunch of, just on that one page, I think, where they'll, they'll capture a lot of consultants who work with those industries or those end users that have had some issues. So that, I think to, again, I think the comment to staff doing a great job in pulling some of this together, I think that will be, that will be extremely helpful. And the other, other thing, the other, other question I had, in addition to the one on how, how are we doing addressing the first month or two of applications, is from a planning purpose perspective for our local governments that are going to get some of the funds from us. Are we going to formula distribute that, kind of like a penny for Pinellas distribution formula? Or are we ju, and, and expect them to provide us the documentation back with how they spent it? And based on the guidance that we've been given and passed on to them? Or are we going to respond to requests up to a certain amount based on population of a city? How are we going to deal with that? I think it was $12 million that conceivably could go to our, our local governments?
That's, that's a great question, one that I'm going to discuss with the cities this afternoon because, you know, we could do it either way, right? My preference would be on the latter, obviously, and that we, we get the documentation reimbursed. That's how we've done FEMA in the past, I believe. But we, we're going to have a city call and discuss exactly that. Because I think cities are impacted differently. Cities that have recreation programs are far, probably far different than others that don't have those types of programs. And we want to make sure that we use and target these dollars. It's not just, it's not an entitlement. You know, it's based on actual costs that we can document. And, you know, and frankly, I really do want to, it, it'd be very easy to kind of just distribute it out. I want to save as much money as we can for issues of PPE and some of these direct line services. And so we maximize our FEMA dollars. If we have dollars at the end, if, you know, depending on the impact and how many people take advantage under the business program, we may or may not have, we may need more money in that program. And so we, so we're trying to shift money around between the programs. Part of that is going to be a work in progress. But I am, I do have a call today with the cities to begin to clarify exactly, you know, their thoughts on that. And also we have a survey that we want them to complete that'll help us give a better idea in terms of what we're looking at from costs that they've incurred thus far.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I mean, I just would, I would try going in anyway, if you're going to go with the latter approach that you're talking about, at least provide some cap, at least in the, going in by city so that, you know, it doesn't overload one city. Oh yeah, those are all legitimate and all of a sudden, they've taken a big, a higher percentage of what they should have, should have taken based on some of the smaller cities maybe taking a little more time getting their information together. So I would at least look at, you know, whether it's a penny for Pinellas percentage distribution cap, at least a cap number going in to keep it evenly distributed among, among all the cities. So that, that was the only issue. And then if somebody could maybe speak to where are we on the queue on both of our programs, the CARES programs of applications that were submitted in May and June? Have we finished all of them? Are we still going through some of those? And just a, just a brief comment. Thank you.
I can talk about the individuals. So we've, we've completed over 1,000 cases. We currently have 3,000 in the queue. I don't have a breakdown for you at this moment, you know, they roll in every day, right? So I don't have a breakdown as far as how old, the oldest one is. That's something we can ask Mickey for.
But remember, just being in the queue does not mean that we're, we're waiting to process it. Maybe that they, they need to submit a piece of paper and they have yet to do that. It's, it's, a lot of times it's the documentation. We're seeing that over and we do, we, we reach back out, say, hey, remember to complete this. We're having the same thing on the business side. And so it could be on our side, it could be on their side.
We're not having it to quite the same extent in the, on the business side. And I think we need to make extra efforts on the individual side. I just.
I agree with that.
You're saying, but it's not working yet.
On the individual side, you know, we pay the landlord directly. We don't just give the individual a check. So that does, you know, create more of a delay with that. But now what we'll, we'll be able to do once, you know, if this is approved, we can go back. For example, anyone that we're waiting on a bank statement for or their assets or something from their employer that they may have trouble getting, now we can do the, the form that I spoke of.
So I have a question too about for the individuals for just doing people that lost their job or lost their income because of COVID. Is there anything we're doing for people who didn't have a job before they started, but now they can't even get one because unemployment's so high? I mean, is there anything we can do for them?
So we do have the funds that would be channeled to nonprofit agencies that are supporting basic needs. So for those, you know, we know from our feeding partners that they've seen double the amount of demand for their services since COVID-19 started. We also know homelessness and eviction are growing concerns. So those programs through the nonprofits would help to bolster up and provide that, that safety net for, for folks who may not have been, had their, lost their jobs or income due to COVID-19 directly, but are in need of additional support because of the circumstances around COVID-19.
Okay, so if we turn somebody down, we would redirect them to one of those agencies?
Correct.
Hopefully.
Lourdes, yes, is that part of the 2-1-1?
I'm, I'm not going to tell you that, that's something that they always do. So when someone calls in, right? It could be one of our rapid rehousing programs. It could be go to Career Source. That's what they do with anything they work on. So that's one of the reasons why we have so many people from our office on the call and they've been trained to point them to other places in the community.
Lourdes, I'd heard some information about you having to put people in there and then pull them out again. And they're constantly retraining the people that are over there helping out.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the email. I wouldn't say that's 100% accurate. You know, there are people that do need to go to the doctor, right? Somebody may need to be tested for COVID. Some people may have a couple of days off because it's an overwhelming position, right? To be on the calls and, and get all of those calls. So Mickey warned us about that. It's what her staff goes through. So just like in any of our jobs, we've had to make sure and take care of our employees, but for the most part, it's been 30 folks. And we do have with the temporary staff that she's requesting another 20. So again, after this is all approved, hopefully today, you know, she can move forward with, with more of those.
Okay.
Commissioner Eggers, I know you, we were, I was going to have Mike Maedel follow up on the business side. I know that was part of your question that we didn't answer.
I had one other one, but yes.
I have those numbers as well, Mr. Burton, if you need them.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor.
All right. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, we just, we have 45 applications right now that have not been touched yet by reviewers. So we should finish those off this week so that every application will be in process. Right now, we have 533 applications that are in various stages of being reviewed or audited. And so far, we've given out 2,773 grants for a total of 13.8 million. So we hope to, again, get all of the applications in process this week. And at the rate we're going, we should be done by mid-July with, with the entire process, we hope.
Well, that's great, Matt. But Mike, thank you. I appreciate that. That's reassuring that at least we're getting on top of the, of the business side. I think we got, we got some work to keep working on the, on the residential side. Going back to, again, to the government piece that we're, that we're talking about, cost re, this is cost related. You know, I guess it's like from March through December of this year, right? But we're talking cost related to COVID. So some of them will be reimbursement costs. Some of them will be planning costs. So from, from a planning standpoint for cities, like if, if they can justify in their own minds or in their own calculations, you know, $10,000 a month so far and probably through the end of them, end of the year, it'll be the same thing for them. Are they going to be able to submit against their cap number? I strongly suggest you put a cap number per city. But are they going to be able to a, a, apply cost reimbursement and anticipated costs? Or is it just cost reimbursement? And I think it could lead to a planning problem for them.
Well, it's, it's got to be, it's got to be cost reimbursement, but the, the issue is it's certainly, it's got to be direct related expenses. You know, it's, it's staff time's not included in that, you know? And so like, for instance, the sheriff, his, you know, his, his deputies that he redeployed, that's not eligible. Overtime that he spent down on the beach is eligible, right? And so there's, there are certain components. You gotta, you gotta be able to document that cost. And the, and the program criteria outlines that. That's part of the reason we want to do the summary first or the survey to be able to kind of get a handle on what we're looking at with our, our, our cities. And, and that'll give us. And, uh, and that'll give us better idea and in terms of how we approach it.
And that, that survey does include both, um, asking, uh, cities about what costs they've experienced to date, as well as what they're projecting through the end of December.
That's, that's great news. I think the guidance for them is gonna be critically important. And so I do think, uh, you know, again, I think it, it's one of those things where if, you know, if, if it's just on reimbursement, they probably could come back in two months and for, from now, for that next two months that they've incurred the same justifiable expense reimbursement request. And continue to do that through the end of the year, um, instead of proactively through a planning process. I guess what you're saying is we have to do it through a reimbursement process. Um, so anyway, I'm glad you're gonna be doing that survey. I think that'll be helpful, uh, but I do think just to make sure that it gets kind of spread around a little bit, that you're careful with, uh, what they think they have access to. So, thank you.
Not sure who to ask. Do we have a number? Wild guess, how much we've given out in individual assistance so far?
So for, uh, the programs through June thirtieth, we're estimating that the cost would be about five million for those applications received June, through June thirtieth. Um, that number doesn't include anything that would be additional beyond, um, June thirtieth.
And we've given out one point five. We've given out one point five million to date as of last night.
One point five compared to thirteen point eight for the businesses.
Right. Totally different program.
Well, I need to say I have a problem with that. I mean.
And, and let's talk, let's quickly address that. I mean, one of the things we asked, we asked that Aubrey, you did that as part of the community survey, you know, why, why this is, why aren't more people accessing? We have three thousand people in the queue. So the key is obviously getting them through the queue and with this attestation forum, or however you pronounce it. Um, you know, then, then hopefully we'll be able to address, um, the bulk of people in the, in the queue. Um, but i- if part of it is simply getting the word out, these, that's the reason, you know, I know you were not thrilled about community navigators, but there are people that are simply not accessing funds. How do we get them to access it? We won't, we're trying to do everything we can to get them to access these funds that they need to help them with their bills. And that, so it's kind of all the above, um, in our approach, trying to make that as simple and easy, um, for them to be able to access these funds to where we can flip that number around.
Well, and I see that we, I don't mean to be harping on this, but I think we've made a lot of expansion now of the business side. And we really need to be thinking on what bottom line, what do we actually need? Is it us asking for, you know, notices from the landlord or is it the federal government? Is it us or is it the clerk? You know, I just think we need to cut the red tape a little bit more. This is, this is crazy. Commissioner Long.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I, I guess that I must be misunderstanding part of this conversation. Because I think I heard there's three thousand people in the queue.
Right.
And yet I heard Barry go on and on about how do we let people know? How do we get people to apply? Well, for crying out loud, we can't handle the ones that are in the queue. That seems a bit disingenuous to me. And I think we, I agree with you, Madam Chair. Th- this buck has gotta stop somewhere. Something is holding up the three thousand applicants that haven't been able to be addressed. It's a little outrageous, quite frankly, especially given the percentage of dollars that have gone out on the other side of the coin. But yet these folks over here, it's miniscule. I, I don't get it. I mean, that's just ridiculous.
If I can, again, three thousand people, if you want us to cut them a check tomorrow without any documentation, we can. But then again, that, then we put ourselves at risk. We've got to have a di- the program has federal government requirements. So this attestation forum says that you were impacted. So we're, we're, we're flipping that risk to make it easier. If you certify to us that you lost your job, but you don't have a letter from your employer, like Commissioner Jarrett said, maybe they closed down. They went out of business, so it's hard for them to get that. Um, and we're flipping that to where we're taking that risk, where we're putting it on the individual. You sign this piece of paper saying that you lost your job as a result, and we're gonna process that. We are making it easier. Um, we didn't have that as part of the first requirement because again, we said, just simply have the minimum documentation necessary. But I have to have an audit process to be able to certify of why we cut that check. Um, and so we are, I think, trying to make it easier and that should address the three thousand people that are in the queue.
Um, and you're right. I- if I can just add with this new change, again, because we've looked to see what else can we get rid of? I've had lots of conversation about that. Um, the only thing folks need is proof of residency or citizenship. Um, because you have to be a Pinellas resident. And then this form that I'm describing as far as if you've lost income, if you have assets, two things.
So we've tried to make this as absolutely as easy as possible. Um, but I, you know, I can't force someone to give us that type of documentation.
Yeah, and, and Barry alluded to what we had heard in the, the public input, um, from the community and what we, we saw in the application process in phase one and and in the initial program. And we're really trying to learn from that. So as Lourdes mentioned, we've, you know, what's before you today would dramatically simplify the documentation that's required. Um, we did hear from a lot of citizens who weren't aware that they were eligible for these programs. Um, many people in our community, and this is a great thing, have never had to avail themselves of financial assistance programs, but are now needing that help. Um, so by, by supplementing, um, this program, expanding eligibility, um, simplifying the process. We think that that'll hit on multiple, um, factors that have been slowing down the process up to this point and really help us to hone in on where may, may there be additional resources that are needed to process these applications quickly? Um, and continue to support two-on-one in their role in helping, um, people move through the process and get the assistance they need.
Thank you. And frankly, I don't have a problem with us taking on the, the risk of opening up those guidelines a little bit because, never mind. Anybody else? Thank you, Commissioner Seal.
Thank you. I just had two more questions that occurred to me during, um, some of the other commissioners' questions. On the, um, reimbursement for local government costs. Uh, as I mentioned, I believe last week, uh, cities can apply for FEMA funding. We at JWV Juvenile Welfare Board are applying for FEMA funding. So, well, we urge cities to maybe go after that as a, um, source of financial relief versus coming to us. Not that I want to be the place of the last resort, but I would like all other sources to be exhausted.
Commissioner, yes, I mean, that's one of the reasons we're gonna have the call this afternoon. What I'd like to see, and again, I'm, you know, we've worked so well with our community partners. I want to make sure this is a, uh, an internal process and we're, we're working together on this. And so I, I really do value their input in terms of how we structure this. But, uh, that would make a lot of sense. I had mentioned that before. They, you know, they, they have about a twelve and a half percent, um, you know, cost share under a FEMA reimbursement. Um, but we, we know those have taken sometimes years to get, get back, but it, but eventually it does come. So if we, if we use the CARES fund to match that upfront, um, then they, they will get that on the backend. What we could do also is, you know, we've got several different programs here and, um, we'll, we'll know, have a better idea in, you know, November or December about where we're at. We could always, um, if there's sufficient funding at the end of the program, uh, provide more of the direct funding that then they wouldn't have to go by for FEMA for. But it, but we could really try to hit them, the match piece first. That gives them part of the funding, um, but maximizes our federal resources.
Okay. My next question is the target industry businesses. Are we still basing those criteria around the qualified target industry like higher wage jobs, et cetera?
Yeah.
That, for targeting?
Yes, yes, that is the, we'll use the same targeted industries we've been using. That'd be the manufacturers, corporate headquarters, um, professional and business services, financial services and the like.
Okay.
Generally, they are the ones that aren't eligible for the small business grants because they're in a, an essential sector of the economy. So this is a way to help people who have had significant expenses in an essential business category and that we desperately want to keep here and to keep, uh, growing employment.
Okay, two more, um, questions and then one quick comment. On the micro grants via Creative Pinellas, is there a dollar figure that we're assigning to that?
So, um, there are more details, um, that I can share with the commission around, um, that micro grant program in particular. Uh, we're working closely with Creative Pinellas to ensure that there's not duplication or double dipping between the two programs. But recognizing that many artists have kind of alternative business models that wouldn't qualify them for the main program. Um, this is really intended to, um, make sure that there's a, an avenue for, um, us to support that, that sector of our economy.
But she, she does have a target amount.
Dollar amount? For the grant?
For the individual grants?
No.
That would be, um, creative.
Have we set aside for?
Oh, two point five million. I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding the question.
Per person applying, can they apply for two thousand dollars or what's the amount?
Let me pull that up if you want to go on to the next question and I'll come back to it for you.
Okay. Um, and then we have, um, the forty-three million for the public health programs and it lists a whole bunch of different items. But I would assume that there's specificity behind this and I'd like to see those specific programs and what we're budgeting for them and what we're gonna exactly do. I don't need to have it now. Um, and then finally, given that we are doing all of these grants, I also see this as an opportunity to remind our individuals as well as the businesses to follow the CDC guidelines. It's another avenue to promote, um, you know, trying to dampen the effects of the COVID virus. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, just, uh, one final comment I wanted to make on the, uh, un- under individuals and families. And they, we've got twenty-six point two million budgeted in there. Um, and some, I think you ma- made a comment that probably through the end of June, we'd have close to five million, even though we only have one and a half million. I guess through the end of June would be the applications that are in process. Um, it's coming, it's kind of getting to the point where those folks that have been unemployed, who are still unemployed ought to be back to us every month to ask for those funds as long as they're not above the other ones. But I think what I'm getting concerned a little bit about is this delay. I, I'm, I'm glad we're delaying the eviction process. But we ought to be helping these folks avoid that eviction process so that the idea behind it is to fund these folks so that they're not being evicted. And, and, and what's, what's concerning me a little bit is that we're, I, I mean, I keep hearing these stories about that, you know, that, that, those number of folks that are subject to eviction are growing. We've put off evicting, so, which is good, but we could be helping them help themselves and at the same time help the property owners not lose their properties to bank foreclosure. You know, so, so somehow, um, I, I, I just don't know what the answer is. We obviously haven't come up with it yet. But if, in theory, there should be, I mean, I know this is just theory, no evictions due to COVID because we have the money to help these folks month to month during this period of time. And at the same time, we're helping mortgage foreclosures down the road by helping this. So to me, I think this is a great program, but at twenty-six point two million, we are only at one and a half now. Uh, that, that's an area that I think we, you know, again, to your com- comment, uh, the chair's comment, Pat, I think it's just an area that we really, I mean, it's there for helping the whole system. If we can just, you know, feed it so that these landlords who are trying to keep good tenants but can't afford, and have to keep them because of that, you know, don't end up losing their property too. I mean, I, and we talked about this last time where we went, where we went to Duke Energy to find out folks, help us find out who's not paying so we can help them. And we were talking about somehow it's a little more difficult with landlords, you know, who's not paying? We, we get to them and say, hey, you know, we've got some help. Um, just muster as much, I, I, again, I know we're doing it, I'm, you know, again, I'm not trying to be critical, but it's just, I just know this is a trickle down effect that's gonna hit our mortgages, mortgage holders on these property, or these, um, property managers of properties that are own apartments out there. And I think there's ways to avert that by helping avert evictions, by helping people. So I don't know, I just, it's a really big concern and I'm not quite sure what the answers are. I'm not smart enough to give you the answers. I'm only a pain enough to, you know, to critique. But I do think this is a massive, massive area of concern, not only for the immediacy, but for evictions. And then eventually for people that are gonna lose their, their apartments, the, the owners are gonna lose their apartment. So anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, and it's, um, I guess I'm wondering, and I don't need an answer for this today, but let's think about what is the criteria we're using to give the money to the other agencies? And the other, and the criteria we expect them to give out money based on? And is there, I mean, if we can't give it away, are they gonna be able to give it away? And so why aren't we using the same criteria?
We met with Doug and Cooley at the, um, Pinellas Community Foundation. Uh, so he's gonna be the one helping. So now, once again, this is approved, we can, you know, sit down and, 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 um, and put all the details in. Um, but he's done a great job before of moving money out to the not-for-profits. Um, they already have a list of folks who had applied for a different program that he has put out. So we're gonna start off with those folks. Again, a lot of them are the feeding groups, the behavioral health group, which you've all heard is a, is a huge need, um, right now, as well as, um, working with the homeless leadership board.
Okay.
And as far as the, as far as the evictions, um, Daisy, early on, got with the clerk of the court um, and, and has a pretty extensive list of how many folks were on that. At that time, I just want everyone to understand, they weren't COVID related. All of this has to be COVID related. Of course, in the next couple of months, more people are gonna be on that list and they will be COVID related, which is another reason why we want to plug in some more money, um, to legal aid and have been, um, working with them.
Okay, thank you. So do I will entertain a motion to pass these, um, guidelines. So, yes, Commissioner Long. Oh, okay. Who was the first?
Commissioner Welch.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Uh, yes, Commissioner.
Do we have to take comments or not?
Public comment, we need to take public comment.
Sorry.
Are we ready to do that, Madam Chair?
Yes, we are.
Okay, at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on this agenda item, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it looks like we have about six speakers that wish to be heard on this item. Our first speaker is Mr. David Waddell. Uh, Dave, if you'll go ahead and unmute, I think we have your information for the clerk and you should have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, everybody. Uh, you're doing a great job. Keep it up. I mean, uh, you're, you're asked to do the impossible. Um, Commissioner Ken, that bow tie, outstanding. Hate to waste, uh, precious seconds on this, but, uh, and your, uh, taste in art is impeccable.
Thank you, sir.
Now, um, I just sent July second to Barry. Oh, by the way, we do have three minutes. All of our plates are full. We're way behind in our response and the toolbox is almost empty. And the tool we need doesn't exist. At this point, before we shoot ourselves in the foot, I'm begging you to put the stay safe at home order back in place. Allow essential businesses to stay open, suspend elective surgeries, require face coverings and social distancing for one month. It's clear you're very confused and overwhelmed. You need some time. You can't juggle all these balls at once. During this month, we can beef up contact tracing, implement mandatory reporting of everyone through an anonymous database and quarantine them. Staying open from this point forward will be a disaster and an experiment gone terribly wrong. We'll see in the next two to four weeks. But we've been talking and I'm gonna take the rest of my time to have a moment of silence for the people that have died, for the ones who are suffering and the families that will suffer forever. Okay? I've heard you talk about business throughout this entire CARES agenda item. Not once did I hear you talk about how we're gonna spend the money medically. All right? If you do not act today, you're going to have If you do not act today, you're going to have this conversation with me next Tuesday. I am not walking away from this. I am very frustrated, but I'm not going to give up. And Jewel, I expect you to start studying up on this mandatory requirement regarding reporting. It's putting our lives at danger, all of our lives. This isn't a, about numbers. It's about boxes in the ground. All right? Dead people, don't spend money. Sick people, don't spend money. The recovery from this is going to be catastrophic. Be prepared.
Mr. Welch, Mr. Waddell, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
I want you to take action today and thank you and God bless you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Stephen Rodriguez. Stephen, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Good morning, Commissioner Stephen Rodriguez.
Sir, we can't hear you very well. Can you get closer to your microphone?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last week I requested that the criteria be looked at regarding the business grants concerning specifically the federal tax return requirement, which actually wasn't even required for the PPP money. And we were denied the grant money because we didn't have federal tax returns to offer them. Plus with our corporation, the federal tax returns encompass the personal tax returns of our owners. So it's very personal information that they were unwilling to share that wasn't adequately protected. I wanted to ask if the PNL is something that is going to be accepted, much like the attestation from individuals? Will a PNL for the company be accepted for the consideration of grant? And if so, do we need to reapply for that grant or use the existing denied application and revise? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a quick answer for that one? Barry, no?
Mike, are you still on the line? So we, we, what's before you would still be based on the tax returns for the business? The, the challenge that has been expressed with profit and loss statements is there's not any way for us to validate the information by relying on the tax returns. It provides an uneven playing field and providing the additional grant programs are intended to address those businesses that may not have those, be able to meet those requirements for those tax returns.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Marilyn Terman. Marilyn, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, do your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you very much. Marilyn Terman, T U R M A N, Clearwater, Florida. Let me just say, there's so much to say on this. I want to first start by just reminding everybody the stress of this very, these very unusual times that we are in and what people are facing. And when we look at funds that have been, you all are stewards over these funds that are supposed to be here to help people. And so the questions have been, why have more people not applied? Why are more, why do more people not know about the funds that are available? Why, should always be the question, why is this not happening? Why do we still have so much money left when there's such, still such great need out there? And thank you, Commissioner Gerard, when you, when you questioned this as far as the hurdles that we've created. And I understand, Mr. Burton, when you talk about accountability to the state and to the, to the feds as far as how we spend this, the money. However, we, we've created too many hurdles. People are saying, you know, they want this and they want that. We, most people don't even know as far as the business. I mean, the taxes, I think that was one of the things that I heard mentioned. If I'm not mistaken, they extended July 31st as the deadline to file taxes because of all that was taking place. So many people won't even have their 2019 taxes filed as far as those, as far as businesses go. Some of the people, we need them to provide bank statements and all of these things. And I understand regards to being a good steward over public funds. However, we're creating hurdles. We're not helping people. We're here to help to make sure people are getting the, the, the resources that they need. We're all in a terrible spot here. I just plead, I beg us, I beg us to please eliminate the hurdles and let's, let's work to help people. And then my last comment I want to say, we talked about a number of different agencies, for instance, 211. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to hurt anybody's feelings, but before COVID-19, 211 was inadequate. It was antiquated. They give out information that's obsolete. When people call, they get the runaround, they're on hold forever. And now we've added COVID to that and now it's even more inadequate. We don't have enough navigators in the community who are, who are there to be able to help people navigate this. We need more navigators and we need more.
Your time has expired, ma'am.
We need more smaller organizations to be able to help the people in the community as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Stephen Brown. Mr. Brown, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon. This is Stephen P. Brown, last name Brown, as in the color. I want to thank, oh, I live in Palm Harbor, by the way. So I want to thank everybody, especially commissioners for, it's so difficult helping everybody who wants to help. But you are our elected decision makers and I appreciate you for stepping up to that role. Most of the public health discussion we've heard so far has been rightfully focused on physical health. And there's been cursory mention of behavioral health, but we seem to be forgetting the emotional health and wellbeing of everyone, basically. With all so much bad news, politics and violence that's being thrown at us right now. As Commissioner Gerard said earlier, emotions are running high. I'd like to share a Culture Track survey of 124,000 people across the country. Most people are bored, feel less connected, they want more connection, they miss having fun. The number one increase in activity since COVID has actually been cooking. The number two has been musical activities, including singing either alone or with others online or even in person while social distancing. People have also been engaging in online activity. 60 to 68% have found value in performances from, that were done before COVID, live stream performances, online workshops. One of the three organizations I work with, we've done weekly and monthly workshops and lost all of our income, but we're still serving thousands of people. It's interesting that 90% of people look to cultural organizations for emotional help, but only 13% pay for it. Only one in three organizations are actually doing anything. So, you know, we've lost our income, but we're still serving, we're still helping people. And, and Creative Pinellas are doing a fabulous job. I really do appreciate them, but their hands are tied. I would seriously consider increasing that amount significantly. Individuals, the visual artists, everyone has a voice. The vast majority of funding last time went to visual artists and went to one town in South Pinellas. Whereas community groups, music groups, that's still only one voice, even though they serve tens, hundreds, thousands of people. People. And, and it's still only one, any, any reward for that or any relief, and yet we're still serving people. Please reconsider just the criteria that you're expecting arts people to engage in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Madam Chair, our next speaker is Elizabeth Siplin. Elizabeth, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Siplin. I'm in 661 Seventeenth Avenue South here in St. Petersburg. Spelling my name is E L I Z A B E T H S I P L I N. And some of the business owners have already expressed their concern about the tax return. My company is in computer consulting, but we also do other diverse things. We may be able to apply, but now the hindrances of the 2019 tax return. I'm currently working with my accountant, trying to get my taxes prepared. So I was not able to capitalize on PPP because that required the 2019 tax return. That's money I could not use for my employees. So now I will be left out of the CARES Act if that's a requirement. The profit loss statement was accepted for St. Petersburg is.
Elizabeth, you just muted yourself, ma'am.
There you go.
Help our small businesses here in Pinellas County capitalize on money that we could not get through the PPP process. And I'm just asking if you would reconsider if it's from, like, we use the crediting, accredited account systems and it's verified through our accountants. Is that a possibility to use? Because if you've already filed an extension for 2019, there's no way we can possibly get a 2019 tax return for this grant or consideration for the funding. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Tommy Lorden. Mr. Lorden, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you very much. My name is Tommy Lorden, L O R D E N. I live out of state in Boulder County, Colorado, but I own a couple investment properties in Pinellas County. And there's been important conversation on the importance of helping both individual and businesses. And I would just remind folks that sometimes businesses are individuals. There's a lot of single member LLCs and so forth. I was one as such that applied for the $5,000 CARES grant because I saw that vacation rentals were specifically included, which would be very appropriate being that all of the bookings in that business was wiped out during peak season. Apparently there was a requirement set by the commission that the funds only be dispersed to people that, that the, to the entity that directly paid the required tourism tax. Well, you should know and probably do know that the vast majority of us rely on Airbnb. They control the vast majority of vacation rental bookings in the state, I'm sure. Well, they automatically remit the tourism tax. It's not even a choice that we have. And so I was denied my grant because I did not directly submit. And so I'm asking, this excluded all of us mom and pop landlords and there's many, many, many of us. So I'd ask you to reconsider or find an avenue to expand grant support for those of us who are affected by this, by this technicality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, our next speaker is Stephanie McNeil. Stephanie, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes.
Stephanie McNeil, S T E P H A N I E M C N E A L, and I live in the city of Clearwater. And I want to really thank you guys. I've been listening and was disappointed that the first round of funding for businesses was for brick and mortar only because there are hundreds, if not thousands, of single home-based businesses with one employee, but they form strategic alliances with other business owners or subcontractors and are very vital to the economy and to this community. So, you know, I've listened to several people who have advocated for businesses that may not necessarily be eligible under the first one, round of funding. I'm encouraged to hear that that is being expanded. And also some of the issues like, you know, I mean, yes, I have my own business, but, you know, my customers were affected by COVID. And so I'm glad to hear that those types of, you know, extenuating circumstances are being put in place and that there will be flexibilities for eligibility and, and all of that. Because like I said, there are single home-based businesses out here, but choose to not have employees for a number of reasons. I'm definitely interested in finding out more information about the business diversity, micro grants and financial assistance and capacity building grant. And wanted to find out when these things are going to be rolled out for business owners.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Juan DeCosta. Mr. DeCosta, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Yes, good afternoon. Juan Costa, D A C O S T A. I am a self-employed business owner in South St. Petersburg at 1049 Street South. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Honorable Kenneth Welch for representing the South Side for all these many years, as we know, he'll be leaving after his term. Thanks for advocating for us all this time and look forward to the big things you'll continue to do in the community. I just had a yes or no question. I was denied as an essential business. I have a sales, auto repair in detail at my establishment. And we were denied due to the fact that I, I guess the classification was essential. So my question was, will these types of businesses be included in the second round? Yes or no?
Go ahead. There've been a few things that have been brought up in the public comment that I can respond to in addition to this question. So yes, with the expansion to additional industries, the intent there is that it's including those that may have been in an essential category during, under the governor's stay-at-home order, recognizing that even those have had some impacts. The question that was brought up about 2019 tax returns and the deadline for that being extended, as you can imagine, the federal guidelines, both for the CARES program as well as tax extension, state provisions for eviction protection, it's a very dynamic policy environment. We have discussed the possibility that if a business has not yet filed their 2019 tax returns, that they could use a prior year's tax returns. But we'll continue to look at some of these different alternatives. And the question about when these programs will be available, we're working with community partners and the intent being that all of these programs would be rolled out before the end of July.
My last, and then I'll yield to the remaining participants is, will I have to reapply? I didn't have an issue with my documents at all, but with being eligible for future funds, will I have to reapply? Will they use my form or application? Thank you and have a great afternoon. Everyone be safe.
Thank you. I, go ahead.
Yeah, because the documentation requirements have changed and lessened, there would be a requirement to reapply so that we get them into the new system and have the documentation that's required now rather than the old information. However, as, as Lord has mentioned, we are reaching out to those who have previously applied to let them know when new programs are available.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch?
Just a quick follow-up. So Audrey, should Miss Siplin, who just called about the 2019 tax returns, should she just go ahead and apply based on what you said?
Correct, and, and they can just use their 2018 tax return.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Corey Givens Jr. Corey, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you commissioners for your time and for your diligence. I certainly respect what you all are doing during these unprecedented times, speaking up and advocating for almost a million citizens across the county. Right now, a lot of people are stressed and overworked and I know you all are included amongst them. So I thank you so much for your advocacy. You know, there's a wide number of businesses value local jobs that contribute to the great quality of life that we've all come to know here in Pinellas County. The essential help to keep our businesses afloat that you all are rendering, we appreciate that as well. But I just want to speak on communication. Communication is important. Engaging our communities and stakeholders is valuable when it comes to making sure that we reach as many people as we can, but this $26 million. You know, we'll just be running circles if we're not out there educating our community. You know, we're preaching to the choir right now, but there's a lot of folks who aren't on this Zoom meeting. They aren't reading the newspaper. They are not watching the news. How are we educating them? My recommendation is let's get out there, let's reach out to our local municipalities, let's reach out to our local Chamber of Commerce and let's get them on board to help them spread the message throughout the community so that people know that there are funds available to help you get through these rough times. You know, I also want to talk about the fact that we need mental health counselors in our schools. Someone earlier on the call brought up the importance of taking care of not only our physical wellbeing, but also our emotional and mental. Our children obviously are going to be returning to school in August, whether we like it or not. So it's important to make sure that we equip every school in Pinellas County with mental health counselors to help our students get through these traumatic times. You know, a lot of them are under a lot of pressures at home that we don't know about because of what's happening in society right now. So my recommendation is making sure that we work with our local school districts to finance and make sure that the money is available to put mental health counselors in every school. So again, thank you commissioners and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, there are no other speakers that wish to be heard.
Okay. Okay. I don't think I had a motion in a second yet, did I?
I think so.
Okay. I'll be willing to enter, yes.
Just a quick, two, two quick questions, if I could.
Yes, please.
There's a couple of people have called in about the federal tax return. I'm glad to hear that we're going to use the 2018 as a substitute for those folks, but others were concerned about, you know, the privacy aspect of it. Is there a way that we could get a statement from them with every, a lot of areas blacked out? So that, you know, that we could then submit anyway so that they keep some of that privacy stuff out of it, but and maybe accentuate the, the PNL part of that? So that was a question. And the other question, yeah, I just had two questions. That one and the second one is the attestation, attestation form for individuals. Is that readily available and can we see one before we get offline today? Can we just see what it looks like? And is it on, when we go on to our website, is it right there so it can, people can see, even before they go through the application process? This is what it's going to look like? This is all you have to fill in? And then, okay, great, that's simple. I'll call and make the arrangements. So those are the two questions.
Yep. So on the the first question, and I'll let Lord just respond on the second one. But for the first question, I think that is a possibility that we could look into. I'd like to talk it over with the county attorney's office, the clerk's office, and Mike, Mydell, and economic development to ensure that, you know, we're not taking unnecessary risk, but that those possibilities do need to be explored. And in terms of the form, I'll let Lord just handle that one.
Sure, that forms, our form, the, for the individuals and families, that's already been approved by the county attorney's office. We do have it. 211 already has it and we will put it up on the website. And we can, I can have Daisy send it to all of you in the next couple of minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gerard, you did have a motion, a first and a second. Commissioner Gerard, you're muted.
Okay, but I can't remember who they were.
As a record-keeping, I have it as Welton Long.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no further questions or comments, all in favor, please raise your hand. Item, motion carries unanimously. That is all our business for the moment. I know, Commissioner Long, you asked if there would be time at the end.
I did, Madam Chair, but out of respect for everyone's time, I'd like to just postpone it till our next meeting. Nothing really critical.
Actually, I appreciate that because I need a break. There's no further business. We are adjourned. Thank you.